Recording in progress.
I think it's imperative that we sing happy birthday to trustee Williams, who's here with us today. Because it's his birthday, so I think at the beginning, we start, there he is, councilman, Constance is here with us. Yep, yep, and we're gonna do it in three, two, one. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to. Mister Williams. Happy birthday to you. This is Mister Williams', second term on the Crestwood School Board. He's definitely involved with our students in the drama program and the band program and always giving back. So we thank you for that and we're praying for another hundred more years on the school board and to be living with us. And before we also begin the pledge of allegiance and calling a roll call, I'd also like to do a moment of silence for the Pope, who recently passed away the day after Easter. Thank you for that moment of silence, guys. All right, now then we open up our regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is called to order at six oh two P M. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moby June.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Constance.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
And Tom Winslet is absent. Mister Chair.
Tom is actually on Zoom, I believe.
But he can't, he can't participate as a council member.
I still want him unmuted.
Yeah, yeah.
Is he unmuted?
No.
Can we unmute him?
Uh huh. I will do that. I'll find it as soon as you have a, you have a.
I mean, what's the worst case that's gonna happen? If he can't vote, that's fine. I'd still like to hear his opinion on anything before comes before.
But he can come to voting.
That's okay. I mean, if he tells me more vote for me this way, I was, you know, I'm sure the residents at home in here can hear him.
I think he is unmuted now.
Thank you. Councilman Montso, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. He's sitting at a big voice in Tennessee, so he's during the sun just like we are. You know, councilman Montso, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of hope, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. Next up, we have a presentation from the Crestwood District Superintendent, Dr. Yusuf Musalem on the Warren Valley Golf Course parking lot. And I just want to make very clear, for anybody that's spreading any type of misinformation, the Crestwood School District is not taking the golf course. Right, because I already got phone calls saying, what's this I'm hearing? Nobody's getting a kickback, nobody from the city is touching it. I got nothing to do with what's happening with the construction. The good news is, I have a great working relationship with the Easter brothers from the Warren Valley Golf Course and an amazing working relationship with the Crestwood School District. So that's what I did. I brought them both together. That's all, that's all we were able to do. We were able to unite. So the good news is, Dr. Musalem is up here, his contractors, his bond, and, 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 and that was recently passed, will be the ones that make these decisions, but he's gonna give us a quick presentation tonight. Again, nobody from the, from the, from the Dearborn Heights City Council or the clerk or anybody has anything to do with this. Thank you. You wanna, do one of the lights? Are we connecting it up there? Yes. Okay, should I push the button? Yeah, we have our I T director here in case she needs.
Just give it a second, Doc.
Yeah.
Until the light's on.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
No, it's gonna be from up, uh, gonna be from over there.
We.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
That's good.
I did, yes.
Is it green now or red?
It's still blinking white. I bet you guys don't have I T like us.
No.
Mister Green's been in the district for many years, though.
Remote it in, is that where you?
Yeah. Those two puppies got a nice kiwi green on today, huh? I realize you got that kiwi green on today. I like that, go green, go white.
And that purple thing. Ah, we have another Bedouin joining us today.
Yes, yes. Not my father's favorite, but here he is. He's definitely my mother's favorite.
Sorry, councilman chair, he's my favorite.
I'll let you know how that vote goes today. I'm loading my software. Dude, what's going on, Suf?
Sorry for the delay on this.
Oh, it's okay, I T's on it.
I guess Suf's favorite, too.
Angelo, go hang out with him.
He's got a chain.
There you go, like the controls down there.
Okay.
Maybe you can send her over to one of our email addresses and councilman, uh, councilman Ahmad will put it up.
The what?
The presentation. I know your computer connects to it. Is it his computer?
Yeah, new piece because he used to use a silver one before.
It's, it's, it's in. Whatever.
How you doing?
Uh, pretty good.
Come on. In order to share grant permission to screen recording, screen purpose, that's what we're trying to do. They have permissions, we gave it the permissions.
You want us to move on to the next item until this is ready?
Yeah, give me one.
Yeah, I'll come back before you try. You can keep the lights dim. Okay. Next up, we have agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
Come on. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the amended agenda for the regular meeting of April twenty second, twenty twenty five as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad. By Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Um.
Yes.
Or actually no.
Go ahead.
No, it's another minutes, not for the.
Okay, any other discussion? This is. Wait, 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 when you get to.
I wanna remove something.
Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have the minutes of the special meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty five.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty five as outlined in four dash eight.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is minutes of nothing. Hang on. All right. Presentation begin. Ladies and gentlemen, we are moving back to the presentation of Dr. Musalem regarding the Warren Valley Golf Course parking lot. But before we also do that, I'd also like to take another moment of silence for Councilman Ahmad's uncle, who recently passed away this past weekend, so I'd, I'd like to do a quick prayer and a moment of silence. Thank you guys for that.
Thank you, councilor.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. May God rest his soul.
Thank you. Dr. Musalem, please present.
Thank you. So first, uh, thank you, Councilman Chair Bedouin, Council Chair Protem, uh, Council Ahmed, and respected members of city council as well as city government. So just to preface, before I get into the presentation of the request for a sublease agreement with the Isa Brothers LLC, I also have with me Mister Diad Mogiribi and Jake Mogidbi, who are our construction managers from Axiom Construction, who are here just in case if there's any technical questions and reference to the construction, they can answer.
Can we also unmute Jason Purcella also? He's also on, I asked him to be on here today.
Thank you.
And Mister Isa is also present here with us as well. If any questions need to be asked, we're all in the same room.
So, um, as the council is aware, in two thousand nineteen, when I became superintendent of the district, that honor was bestowed upon me and then we had COVID. Then once we came out of COVID, something became a glaring need, and that was the safety of our students and community over at Riverside Middle School. As you know, Riverside Middle School currently has thirteen hundred students. Of those thirteen hundred students, vast majority of students are driven to school, some walk, many take bus and transportation. What became very clear was that we needed to come up with a plan on how to create a more safe environment for our students, our parents, our staff, as well as the everyday travelers on Warren Avenue and Beach Daily. Riverside Middle School sits at a very busy corner. So this, you know, parents, council members, members from the city council, as well as the Board of Education at the time, were reaching out like, how do we make this better? How can we improve this? So one of the things that helped us through this process is, and I want to thank Mister Isa and, you know, his family, Isa Brothers LLC, is they have allowed us to use the northeast corner of the parking lot of Warren Valley, which has allowed us to pull some cars off the street, but it still creates issues of safety and concern, as well as traffic congestion. So I just wanted to preface the presentation that this conversation, yes, it is about requesting the city council and the city to approve and to give us consent to sublease with Lisa, uh, Isa Brothers LLC, but in order for us to do the work and to use district funding, we have to lease that property. And we, we completed traffic studies, we looked at different scenarios, and this is where the presentation comes in. So I want to just, uh.
I, I want, I want you to know something, Dr. Musalem, before we move forward with this. When we made that vote on the Warren Valley Golf Course, the first thing, question that was asked to the, to the Mister Isa and his family was, will the Riverside still be able to use the parking lot? That was the make or break.
Yes.
And it's, it goes back to the students, the community, and then, like you said, the congestion inside out of Warren. And in that congestion, so our proposed plan, and I'd like everyone to understand that our proposed plan is not something that was created in a whim. We, um, we use French and Associates as our architectural firm, Axiom is our construction management team. We had a traffic study completed recently, and with all of that is how we came up with this plan. So this is the quick agenda, and I'll start going through. So the challenges we're solving, first and foremost, as mentioned, and which is the most important challenge, is safety. Ensuring the safety of the students and the community. Those of you that have ever traveled down Warren Avenue during arrival or dismissal time for Riverside Middle School know that there is traffic congestion all the way down Warren Avenue, past Beach Daily. And this congestion isn't only unsafe for the drivers, but also our students who are crossing the street. Recently, I want to thank the Dearborn Heights Police Department because they have been a very helpful resource over there. And we've had conversations with our S R Os and the Dearborn Heights Police Department on how we can make this more efficient. Again, the efficiency piece, operational efficiency and meeting the requests of community members. In twenty twenty, when we came out of COVID, this was one of the biggest issues that the community kept bringing to my attention, is the safety of that. If, I don't know if you all remember, I gotta dig it up, but when we put, I know trustee Kaminsky can remember this and trustee Janoon, but we put up cones and those horse blockers all around to create a path because what was happening was everyone was blocking access to Warren Valley Golf Course, which was impeding on Mister Isa's, you know, uh, uh, use of the parking lot, the Warren Valley Golf Course. I mean, there were a lot of things that were happening. And the funny thing is, I remember taking my phone out, we put the cones, and I drove through and I videotaped, it said, come in through here, follow these cones, follow out. And the reason for that was because prior to that, I mean, it was just, everybody was everywhere. So that was, we, we knew that was a temporary fix, but we also knew that in order for us to go the next step, it was gonna, it's gonna cost, you know, us dollars, so on and so forth. And then the partnership that we've had with Warren Valley Golf Course, the Isa Brothers, has been phenomenal. There has not been a time, not one time, where we haven't reached out to Mister Isa and said, we need your help, and he said, no. He was like, yeah, whatever you need, and he said, come on by, let's talk it through, let's figure it out. One time he called me up and I was in the parking lot directing traffic, and he's like, Dr. Musalem, I need you to come, I need you to see this right now, I'm outside, come see me. And he came out and him and I were working on things, trying to figure things out. He was helping me direct traffic. So on top of that, we've had a great working relationship with the council, where just, you know, every time we've come, we've said, look, we need help, the council's always helped us. So these are the, we're, we're solving problems of first and foremost, safety, but also efficiency and continuing building upon that partnership. So I'd like to go through this real quick. What is the proposed plan? So, um, this blue area here is the area that we are requesting to sublease. This is the current area that we use, okay? And in the next couple of slides, I actually have the diagram to show you how it all works. So currently, this is the area we use, and currently, this is the Warren Valley exit and entry, and we use that as well. Over here is our parking lot. You see the difference in size? This here is Warren Avenue, and here is Riverside Middle School. So I'd like to move forward because these next slides really explain what our plan is. So our proposed plan is that if we are able to sublease this area from Mister Isa, Isa Brothers LLC, and attain consent from city council, we will then sublease this area, we will improve this entire area, the asphalt, everything. This will be part of our project. This will be, is a bid process. If there's anyone that has any questions on the bid process, please do not hesitate to reach out. Every job we do goes through the bid process, every job we do goes through the Michigan bid system. We're posting the bids publicly, and then it's a sealed, it's a sealed bid opener that is conducted by our attorneys, which is Tru Law Firm, and in support with our construction team, architects, as well as our office. So through the bid process, we will be bringing in a company that will redo this entire area, asphalt, and some small redesign over here because we need to expand a little bit of space. This is our current parking lot. Now, I don't know if you can see these arrows, but I have something that will explain how this will work. When we talk about traffic congestion and we talk about how this is gonna support our students and our parents, with this plan, we will be able to pull between seventy-five to a hundred cars off of Warren Avenue. So you're, you're looking at that congestion on Warren Avenue not totally eliminated. I don't want to say, sit here and say it's gonna be eliminated by a hundred percent, but it's gonna be very close. Additionally, we will be moving away from using Warren Valley's exit and entrance. Purpose of that is then that congestion will be eliminated here as well. And in the next set of slides, I'm gonna show you how that's gonna look. So this is what we currently do. You see these red dots? This is where the cars are currently lined up. Again.
Alongside Warren.
Alongside Warren, this is Warren Avenue. This here is the Warren Valley entry and exit. As everyone knows, there is a light right here. That light is a big nemesis for us because that's what creates a lot of the congestion. Wayne County has been very helpful, Commissioner David Kinesik has helped us as much as he can with that, and I appreciate him for that. So currently, cars line up here, they come around here, students get picked up and dropped off in this area, and then they pull out. Well, when they pull out, it's very hard for us to maintain a push out to, um, the, uh, on westbound Warren, because some people want to turn on the eastbound, this creates even more of a congestion. Moreover, we have students who are crossing the street at the light, which then slows it down and creates even more of a congestion. With the proposed plan and why the sublease with Warren Valley and the Isa Brothers is so crucial to the safety and eliminating the congestion, is this blue square here, this is our property. Over here starts the city and Warren Valley's property. We will be creating an open gateway where the entry into this circle will start at our entry, the current entry of Riverside Middle School. Cars will pull all the way through and students will be picked up from along here. Then cars will come through and exit our exit. And we will be pushing all cars to go we, uh, westbound on Warren Avenue. So what we're doing here is we're eliminating the congestion that impacts Mister Isa's business. We're also eliminating the congestion over here that creates safety hazards for our students who are crossing the street. Additionally, this is gonna also support with our Dearborn Heights Police Department, the S R O, to make sure that cars are flowing out of here in a smooth fashion. Now again, why do we need the sublease? We need it because we cannot use district funds on property that is not leased by us or owned by us. We're not asking to own the property, we're asking to lease the property. Moving forward, within the sublease agreement, so this is, right here is, is another aerial view of what we currently have. Again, I'm gonna, I just want to go through this again because this is another view, might help you see things a little better. Again, this area is our property. Our, with this proposed plan, parents will enter through here, circle about here, come back out this way and exit at our property. This will be all consolidated so that we are not imposing on Mister Isa's property, which impacts his ability to get his customers in and out of his property easily. We are also going to be able to reduce the congestion that is, sorry, the congestion that is created down here, and will be able to push all traffic to go westbound on Warren Avenue. So we won't have traffic going both ways, which then, again, this is two times during the day, and it's worse at dismissal than it is at arrival, because at dismissal, everyone's leaving at the same time. At arrival, you may, you have changes here and there.
A lot of late students, huh?
Nah, not really, it's just, you know, sometimes, matters the weather. So there's some highlights through the sublease agreement that I wanted to just bring up. First off, if this is approved, the process will be that if city council approves that, um, we, if city council consents to Mister Isa subleasing that northeast corner to the Crestwood School District, it will go to our Board of Education on May eighth for our board's approval, and then Mister Isa's final approval, because we have to get approval from the city, the board, prior to moving forward. And any contract that we use, doesn't matter whom it's with, the process is, it goes to the board, the board reviews it, the board makes sure that everything is what we want to do, and then it goes to the individual or the company. We, our goal is to start, if approved, work on June sixteenth. That is literally the Monday or Tuesday after school lets out. Our goal is to have this project completed before the start of the school year. We put August thirty first here, but our goal is to have it done two weeks prior to that. This is so that, right away, we can relieve that congestion and that traffic. In section four of the lease, the lease does say it's a fifty-year lease. There, and the reason why it says it's a fifty-year lease is because of the amount of work and the financial impact it's gonna have on the district. And it also states in there that if at some point Mister Isa no longer, if the Isa Brothers no longer have a lease agreement with the city, that the city would honor the remainder of the time with the Crestwood School District. So let's say in twenty years, Mister Isa sells and he's no longer there, he's no longer your leasing, the contract would stipulate that for the next thirty years, the city would honor it. Now, again, I want to reiterate something. The school district gains nothing out of this. Actually, this is gonna cost us over a half a million dollars. The community and the residents are the ones that are gonna gain out of this. In fifty years from now, I will not be your superintendent. I hope I'm still alive, I'll be ninety-nine years old, but in fifty years from now, this is going to impact our children. This isn't about Crestwood, it's about these, these kids and the community, and that's why the lease agreement is written that way. Section five of the lease agreement is that we would be leasing from the Isa Brothers LLC for one dollar, thank you. You know, save us some money as a district, because as you all know, we're just, we're publicly funded. But when, what we are, what we want to do to help Mister Isa as well is that when Riverside Middle School is, school is not in session, there's also a reciprocal agreement that he will be able to use this parking area if he has any major events where he can use that parking area as additional parking spaces. And right now, it's sixty-five additional parking spaces. So in the summer, the weekends, evenings, when school's not in session, Mister Isa will have access to use this, but also this area too. I want to make something clear, I don't have it in here, this area is not closed off. We will be sectioning it off of like cones and, you know, a couple shrubs just to make it look a little pretty, but we're not closing it off because Mister Isa is gonna need that area as well when he has major events. So this again comes back to the partnership, and that's something as a school district, we have to have these partnerships with the council, the mayor's office, the police department, fire department, and our local businesses. Taking the next step, part five, which is an important piece of the sublease, is that, um, basically through this process, again, the way our contact, the sublease is written out is that we are coming to council to give consent to Mister Isa to sublease that northeast corner of the parking lot to the Crestwood School District for the use to repair it, fix it up, clean it up, expand it a little bit, and use it so that we can have a safe traveling distance for our community and to pull that congestion, the traffic off of Warren Avenue. And I want to, again, reiterate, this is all gonna go through a bid process. This, um, anyone that would like access to that bid process can reach out to my office and we will connect you with the right individuals. And the Board of Education, all seven board members approve the bid process, all seven board members review the bid process, all seven board members make a determination on how that bid goes out. And, um, you know, so I just want to make that clear because there's, there's some people that think that jobs are just given to people. No, it go, every project we have goes through a bid process. As the community is aware, we have invested in the city already since twenty twenty. Thank you to my phenomenal board and former board members, trustee Kaminsky, almost twenty-one million dollars in our city. If we can, thank you. If we continue to improve our school infrastructure and improve student achievement, that doesn't just help Crestwood in the headline, it helps our entire community. And right now, this is a key component to our success, to safety, and this has already been moved to phase one of our bond process, if approved by city council, then approved by my, the school board, and then agreed upon by Mister Isa. So that's basically the highlight of the, the proposal, the request for the consent to sublease, and well, I'm open for any questions. Again, the construction team is here, Mister Isa is here. Real quick, Dr. Musalem. Yes. Uh, and I will, I will eventually allow the residents to speak when they have their two minutes, and allow you to respond. I still think we have to get into a little deeper dive into it for, for everybody's understanding. I think this is a great presentation, I think this is a very, very, very great first step. Um, I know that time is of the essence with us, I think we need to take it to somewhat of a study session, make sure that our.
I think we need to take it to somewhat of a study session, make sure that our attorneys are all looking at this properly, making sure everything's going good. Maybe negotiate a little bit out of you, see what can get out of the Crestwood School District a little bit. I see Najak is backing up. Maybe, you know, maybe, maybe assist us with some funding. But I mean, ultimately, like, look, it goes back to the students, the residents and safety. I can't tell you how many times I get a phone call from somebody saying, you know, it's so backed up, Warren's a mess, this looks like, I see cop cars that are blocking out one lane. Um, and and so like, I think this is gonna be a very, very good thing. Uh, but I just think we just have to make sure that we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's and so that, like you said, it's a fifty-year lease. We want to make sure that this is something that's uh, you know, putting our best foot forward. And I know that you're definitely doing that, but uh, for any of the naysayers out there, I think it's also good and clean to be able to air some of that stuff out.
Well, we're open to that, of course.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna be a thousand percent transparent in everything that we do and we're open to any questions.
Councilor?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor. Dr. Musalem, thank you for an amazing presentation. I love the project. I want to thank Mr. Isa for uh being on board with this. This is amazing. Uh, my question, I don't know if I missed it in the contract, but uh, I know you're doing the improvement, but what about the maintenance? Is it you or is it gonna be Mr. Isa?
It is us. Being that it will be, we will be leasing the property, we will maintain it, we will plow it, we will clean it up. It will be our responsibility.
Even cut the front of the Warren Valley golf course, it's really, it's not the city, but they graciously doing it.
I mean, I can't say we will, but I mean, sometimes we can be neighborly supporters.
We'll just throw in the lease. So that, that goes down probably for the snow and everything, right?
Yes, everything, everything, everything.
Entire Warren Valley.
Yeah, well, yeah, but.
Guys, we're negotiating right now. I'm not even trying to be funny. Any other questions here?
Yep, Councilman Constance.
Thank you and thank you, Dr. Musalem, for coming. Uh, of course, the, the uh, school district will have liability insurance coverage and for their responsibilities and their portion. And then you might want to consider at least for ten years with an option to renew. Because fifty years is a long time. I mean, who knows? Forty years, we may, kids may all be going to school sitting in front of their computer. I hope not, but uh, so that would be my only thought is a ten-year period renewable.
We, we can look at that period. Um, one of the things we just want to ensure is that, you know, because we're gonna be investing so much money into that property, we want to make sure that we're getting useful life out of it based on our investment. But we definitely can have that conversation and go back and look at the, the, the terms in, in reference to number of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Jason Purcell has got his hands up.
Yeah, thanks, Mo. Um, look, we're, the golf course is fully supportive of this as well. Um, we understand the need and we see, you know, just how dangerous it is out on the streets and the traffic congestion causes for all of us. Just a technical thing to consider, um, so you may recall during the golf course agreement or negotiation process that the city was very concerned about the rights to retain the parking lot so that the parking lot could be used for the school and it could be used for concerts and things like that. And so consequently, the lease actually, or the definition of premises excludes the parking lot in the lease agreement that we have. Uh, we have the golf course and the Isa's, the, the, the right to use the parking lot as much as we'd like. But we don't actually, like, I don't think that we have the right to sublease to the school. I think that's gonna have to be the city.
Nope.
Agreed.
Okay, definite. Um, anything else, Jason?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. So I'll have you get up, you want to ask a couple of questions? And then, I sure, I know you had your hand up.
Hi, Sue Kaminsky, um, former school board member, but this deal for using the parking lot was before the current school board members and Donna Ansonik went to the county when the county owned the golf course. And I believe it was two thousand and two, so this has been long ongoing and got a handshake deal that Riverside Crestwood School District could always use that parking lot. So I just wanted everyone to know um where it originated and how. And it was because back then there was problems with it and there was nothing in writing, but it was one of those deals. And that's why when the city took over from the county, the golf course, um, I was pretty vocal that this continue on because of that handshake deal. So I just kind of wanted to give a little history so no one thinks that there's something going on here, somebody's trying to take advantage. This is nothing that is new. It's just finally putting it in paper and taking some responsibility.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, sir. Please state your name. I'm sorry.
My name is Ali Chato and I wasn't here for this proposal, by the way. I'm here for another problem. By hearing the story of the parking lot, this is a half a solution. We always, as a Crestwood, we come with half solutions. Also, the city as whole, you know, we come with half solutions. Technically, we're not paying one dollar for that lease. We're paying five hundred thousand dollar plus, almost a million dollar. So, and we're not solving the issue, given the fact that there's almost half of the students probably there be driven to school, you know? Cutting the buses, which I don't know, I have five kids, I have to go between schools to drop here and drop there. We don't have budget, but we approved before twenty million dollars. It disappeared for some reason. Now we have ninety million dollars that we're sitting and we don't know how to spend it. Technically, that solution, it's nothing but causing another problem. The reason why? Coming to Warren and entering that parking lot for the school, then you're gonna push people all the way to the other exit to drop their students. Okay, in the winter time and then coming around to come back and then make them right where they're gonna be stuck again at that light. Okay, where almost ninety percent of the students that come in west of Beach Daily. So solving a problem for somebody else from our tax money, we're not accepting this. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Chair?
Can I respond? There was a, I don't know if there was a question in there or not.
I got a few questions, Councilor.
Yeah, okay. Um, let me hear and then I'll, then I'll have you and respond at once.
So.
Good, Councilor.
I, I appreciate the residents' input thoughts on this, but we did have a traffic study done, correct?
Correct.
And the study, the traffic study does implement what um what, what the district is proposing, correct?
The traffic study does represent what have been proposed?
The problem is, and I pass by their daily, where when schools out, the problem is, is that right after school and you get out, people heading east and people heading south on John on Beach Daily, it's an absolute cluster. There's no movement of traffic, watching the police officers that sit on the corner directing traffic for students cross. Uh, pushing traffic and managing the traffic, it's, it's, it's gonna relieve things because believe me right now, what the young gentleman just came up. No matter which way you put traffic, the congestion's always pushed down both ways on Beach Daily and on Warren. It doesn't solve the issue. If you can take traffic off and direct traffic one way heading west on Warren, it could prevent a lot of congestion going back east. And there are people that want to turn south and people that want to go north on Beach Daily. That's the problem we have is that the people, the kids are crossing there, the accidents they run in, the injuries that we have on their corner. Even if we spend a million dollars as a taxpayer myself, saving one kid from getting injured, somebody getting killed is worth every penny. At least we're not, so.
Point of order, point of order.
And, and, and trust me, what I'm saying, and this is not the.
Point of order, sir, point of order.
I'm not getting emotional. I'm just saying that I, I, I don't have kids, but I'm a taxpayer, okay? But having one kid get hit by a car crossing the road or anything, it's priceless. There, there's no price of money you can put onto somebody for tax. But what I'm saying is that we did have a traffic study, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Um, I may take two more questions and then we're gonna, we're gonna move on from this.
My name is Ina Maru. I have a child at Crestwood. I would like to first reach out to the city, to the Isa's and Dr. Musalem, who have worked crazy hours to try to get this bond passed. The Isa brothers have worked with us through everything. I've had WESAM out there and helping us direct traffic with Dr. Musalem. When Dr. Musalem had to get in the car and have to drive around to show parents how to drive around and put the car, I actually called him laughing. Okay, because it's mainly common sense that a lot of people are missing, but it's our kids that are at stake. And what we're trying to do is just that one child, just that one child that we could protect is what we need to do. And if they're investing that kind of money, ten, twenty years, and they're gonna keep up with it and we're working with our neighbors, I think it's a good, it's a no-go. I mean, like, just do it. We have to do this for the safety of our kids.
Say yes, go, you mean, say yes, go.
Yes.
I, I think you might say it's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer. It really is a no-brainer. I'm out there as a parent directing traffic, helping as much as I can. There's, it's too risky. It's crazy. Our kids are at stake. Our community neighbors are not happy. Our neighbor's as a business owner, not happy. He's doing everything he can to help us. We need to help them and we need to keep our kids safe.
Thank you. Guys, I just want to say something and I don't want to kind of like, you know, beat a dead horse, but gentleman that spoke, you know, and, and, and this man is, is also shedding some light on certain things. There is going to be a little concern, I know those are traffic study done, when you are sending everybody west, is there gonna be now the city enforcing that you can't turn left onto the Amboy Street to go take all the way down to cut to the neighborhood and then has? Which is gonna end up, you know, it's just gonna be. Right to go. Point of order, sir, sir, point of order, please. This is where. Yeah, man, please, man, please, a point of order, point of order. I'm, I'm just saying some food for thought, just something that I'm now just, you know, and it's okay to have differences of opinion, guys. That's what this is all about, having a great discussion. You know, and we're not always gonna agree to, to, you know, we sometimes agree to disagree. But I am gonna hear from one more. I know Mr. Abdulhak had his hand up. Trustee, I will hear from you during public comments, uh, which is in two minutes. It's right after this, right after that. Mr. Abdulhak, and then we are going to move this, we're gonna hear from Dr. Musalem and move on.
Good evening, Zuhair Abdelkhat. Uh, I just want to tell a little story to the public about this golf course. When Mr. Baydun, the owner of Bellagio, came who wants to buy that property and put the housing on it, he approached me.
It's not me, Mr. Baydun, by the way, for full. I don't even have, I don't even got two pennies to rub right now.
He came to me, to my office and asked me to talk to a couple of the city council members, um, Mrs. Lisa Hexa Clayton, Ray Muscat, and to convince him to basically go ahead and agree to have four to, to three votes to sell it to him through the county so the city will approve the sale. And I did talk to the council people and they wrote letters on his behalf and two other people, Dave Abdullah and Tom Berry wrote the same letters. And when I found out, and the city council members at the time found out that it's a flood plain, they retracted, we retracted all the letters and all the support to keep that flood plain and to keep it golf course and not to build on it at any time now or in the future. Now, now, I'm looking at the, at the plan. I think the wise thing to do is to go to a study session because the traffic study which uh was shown here is not convincing to me that it is the safest way. Because when you make a left turn coming out, is there going to be?
You can't make a left turn, you can only go right.
You can go only li- uh, on, only right. Now, those, those people will go again to the other side, probably they're going to make left turn the next street.
Yeah.
I suggest you guys put it to a study session because this is a very important to the safety of our kids. And I believe I thank Mr. Isa because, you know, he came along, but I do believe that this will save the city some money by taking the school board, spending the money to fix that property because we are responsible for, for it according to the contract with Mr. Isa. So that will save the city around half a million dollars. But again, look at the study s- session to see the traffic study. That is the most important. That will assure the safety of our kids and that's the most important issue. Thank you.
And, and just to do some wrap up here, uh, Dr. Musalem, and we'll go from there.
Uh, just a quick wrap up. I mean, listen, we take everyone's input very seriously and throughout this entire process, we've had through the traffic study, through traffic engineers, through architectural firms, through our construction team, we've looked at many different options. And, you know, this option was the best option that came out in terms of what's gonna be most safe. And at the same time, without this, you know, we're landlocked. And what everyone has to understand, and I'll just close with this. Schools, school districts that were built in the nineteen sixties and before, we all think about the school districts that are being built in the last twenty, thirty years. School districts that were built, nineteen sixties and before, were built as neighborhood schools. What I mean by that is they weren't built to keep traffic into consideration because everyone was walking to school. And this is a struggle that we have in the city of Dearborn Heights, across our city, not just at Crestwood, but at all schools, is that there is limited space for schools to expand and or take more concrete areas for such issues because these districts, again, nineteen sixties and before, were built as walking school districts and were to not take into consideration the mass amount of cars and transportation on the roads today. And I do want to say that when it comes to busing, there is a national shortage of bus drivers. And through our board meetings, and it's in the notes, the, any bus routes that we had to cancel is because we didn't have staff. The companies that we leased out to didn't have staff and we had to cut bus routes because there was no one to drive the buses. And they offered raises, they offered bonuses, they offered stipends, they promoted it. And this is a national problem right now. So we're trying to take all of this that's happening and create the best solution for the community. So again, Council, I appreciate your time. I appreciate the comments by everyone from the community.
Thank you. We're gonna hear from uh, uh, two quick Council members and we're gonna move on from this. Councilman Minalowski, next one.
Yes, um, actually you brought up something I didn't think about. You're absolutely correct. When I was in elementary school in Dearborn Heights, we, everybody walked. We actually walked home for lunch and walked back to school. It was that close. That's how the neighborhoods were set up. So I, I didn't even think about that. There wasn't a bus.
Uh, Councilman, yes, I'll say, Councilman? Thank you, Councilor. Dr. Musalem, uh, just a quick question with this, the traffic study. Does it say how many, like, do you know exactly how many people are, you know, using cars to be driven to school or?
Um, we have that. I'm pretty sure we have that in the numbers. I can pull that up and I'll bring it to the study session. I don't know it off the top of my head.
And I, I, I don't know if you can go back to the diagram if you don't mind, but it shows that green, uh, dotted line. Does it, like, does it tell you how many cars it fits in that parking lot and like if, like back to back, like backing?
For, for the green?
Yes.
They're saying we'll get at least a hundred cars off of Warren Avenue.
Hundred cars. And was that traffic study shared with our police department and with the chief?
Um, I have to go back and check my notes. I want to say yes, but I have to double check, okay? And not our current chief?
Not the current chief.
Not, not our current chief.
Okay, I'm sorry. And my third one could be a suggestion. I'm not, I'm not sure if it could be, if you can go back to the first one, if you don't mind. Uh, see that green, that green spot to the right? I know this is like a divided between the west parking lot for Riverside and the east parking lot. Is it possibly maybe to have maybe like a driveway in the uh, green spa and maybe have the people going in and exiting on Beach Daily or?
That's not, so we did think about that, but the problem is we don't have enough space there to put concrete based on code. So we won't be able to put anything over there. That space.
I'm talking about the southeast corner.
Talking about.
No, no, right here, then the corner, see, the south, the southeast corner, right there, yeah, right there.
So again, what would happen is that will not take, that would probably take maybe, it'd probably take maybe thirty cars off of Warren. That area is not large enough.
No, I'm talking if you do the same plan, go in, go in, uh, like the valley, um, you know, the course parking lot, going back out.
On the laser.
I'm getting lazy.
Yeah.
Can, can you show this, Slav?
Uh, that one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm saying, going back.
So right there is our current parking lot.
Correct. So they're going in from here, correct?
Correct.
Going in, they're gonna go around, maybe they can go back out, going through this, like a driveway, going to the, this parking lot over here and exiting on Wa- exiting on Beach Daily.
You'd be too much, correct? So the problem is you'll have conflicting traffic patterns because we have buses and students in that area over there and that's a parking lot that's used by the staff, so there's not much space there.
And you got your bus route there.
Yeah, it's, and, and, and it comes back to purchase for land. That, that's, that's our biggest issue for landlocked. And look, there, there really isn't a perfect scenario, so we're trying to find the best scenario available. And let, let's just like put this out there. If we don't do this, we're gonna keep using Warren Valley's entrance and exit. No, worst case scenario?
Are we, are we able to open another open, uh, like entrance and exit on that parking spot with the blue line is or that's?
Over here, this is the county property.
Okay.
So we would have to go through the county through that. What we're trying to do is we're trying to maintain it where we're using only our, only.
Shouldn't we get some funds on the county?
Yeah. It's not necessary, right? Because you want it to come like this. Yeah, you want to be able to stack as many cars as possible, you know? You want to enter everything through, through the uh, Riverside parking lot and make the exit entrance to Riverside and the leave. You don't want Warren Valley Golf Course drivers to come in and start pulling in from. you don't want Warren Valley Golf Course drivers to come in and start pulling in from there, you get what I'm saying? You don't want them to get confused. So right now, just so you know, plenty of our team as well, there are times we have staff members who stand right here to make sure that cars don't block the entire entry. I can tell you, I've done it, and it's not safe. Now, I'm the superintendent, I get run over, I get run over, but I don't want any of my team getting run over. And we're, it it's, 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 it's very difficult, it's very difficult, and we're just trying to find the best case scenario.
We're gonna take this to a study session?
That sounds great.
I think this is great information, I think we, everybody is kind of in agreement, just ironing out the, you know, the knots and whatnot.
That, we're more than welcome to that, just let me know when, we'll get the team there.
Uh, and most likely be sometime next week.
Okay, I don't wanna mess up this with I T, should I just unplug it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time.
Dr. Mousalem, I appreciate you and I appreciate the trustees for being here today. Um, and I can, and I appreciate the resident for being here as well. And, no, man, my. Next up, we have four D minutes of the regular meeting, April eighth, twenty twenty five.
Councilor?
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved to the Dearborn Heights City Council, approved the minutes for the regular meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty five as outlined in four dash B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at Aye. Although opposed, the Ayes added, motion carries. Please turn nothing from the audience. Thank you. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments, on anything you'd like to talk about. Yeah, I see that. Yep, step right up, you have two minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Ali Chato, I live on Robin Dale in Dearborn Heights.
Hang on one second, sir. Please, nothing from the audience, please. Thank you.
I've been a resident in Dearborn Heights for the past nineteen years, on the same street, in the same house, in the same neighborhood. I'm sick and tired of Dearborn Heights. That's unfortunate, with all the changes, you know?
Hang on one second, pause this time. Can you guys take it out there, please?
Thank you. We haven't seen any improvement. We used to get some cleaning, some road patching or removal of potholes. We used to see a lot of good things in the first couple of years, I moved in two thousand and six. After that, I've been begging, me and my neighbors, to just take care of our street. I talked to a lot of people, I'm not gonna name, there's people sitting here, and nobody showed any respect to a resident of Dearborn Heights paying taxes. The second thing, I reached to the Department of Public Safety, I believe. Yeah, they're just ignorant, or arrogant, or whatever it is. I'm specifically here for the problem on my street, it's off Warren, south, sorry, yeah. Uh, north of uh Warren, entering Robin Dale, there's a lot of potholes, and it's not enough to patch it, every year they come, they throw some asphalt, where it's deleted after them. It goes away when there's a little rain or there's snow. I cannot drive my cars, and it's very hazardous, where it's subject to injuries for people that are walking for some reason. I reached to whatever Mr. Ali, the engineer, no response.
Pause this time, pause this time real quick, I just wanna give you guys a quick background story. I know Mr. Shadu since I was a a very young man, his son was actually ju- just got his driver's license and was driving, you know, his daddy got him a vehicle. I think the week his father got him a vehicle, his tire popped because he hit a pothole. And so about two and a half years ago, I called in about this on Robin Dale, and he's still in the same exact scenario. Right, I just wanna give a quick background on on where his frustration is coming from, continue.
I know, I have a lot of pictures, and it it needs to be all removed and put new. It's it's actually, the silly part, it's it's just that little space, you know, it's, instead of throwing the asphalt and putting budget for this, repair year after year, it could have been done long time ago. But I don't know who's in charge, uh, and I just need your help. This is the last time, time I ask for help, because I'm gonna go different route. Thank you.
Yep.
Can you give your information to George right there and leave your email?
It's in the front.
Or in the front, I'm sorry.
In the form, just fill it out.
And I'll reach out to the director, and director is right there, actually, you wanna pass by and see the street director, Dancy?
Thank you.
Are they there? Usually.
Right, ma'am, you got two minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, trustee.
This afternoon, Whitefield Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. So I might need a few little extra time, but hopefully not. So I will just say this, we have worked, like with the whole bond process, I mean, yeah, at least a year, and we had, I wanna say six or seven community meetings where, you know, the process was being discussed and we were looking for community input. Um, there is no perfect solution, there really is no perfect solution. So we, a- and I totally understand the gentleman's concerns about, you know, you eliminate one problem, you cause another one. It's, this point is trying to do as much damage control as possible to to lessen, you know, the the concerns and I know that there's um a resident that I've spoken to several times that has concerns about, you know, people turning, you know, parents turning left onto Berwin Street, and then they're speeding down Berwin Street. Um, there's, but she was requesting, I know you guys, I'm sure you're all aware of the stop sign that was supposed to be put up um on Berwin, and it's been a very long time that that has been, you know, supposed to be done. But anyways, here's my, here's my thing. If our parents are not going to follow the rules, no matter what we do, we're gonna have problems. So, you know, w- there's rules in place, you can't turn left, you can't, and and they're doing it anyways. So right now, uh, as a school district, all we can do is try and put with the best solution, but we need the parents' help to make sure that they're, you know, they're eliminating a lot of our problems. They're turning left when they're not supposed to be turning left, there's signs that say don't turn left, they're turning left anyways. So, and honestly, that's our biggest problem. So to, if I had to drive a little extra, a little further, to make sure that the kids were safe, I'm gonna do it. I mean, if I have to, if I have to inconvenience myself a little bit for the safety of the students, I'm gonna do it. So if the concern is that I have to drive further down in order to go home, what, if you have a better solution, please come to the study session and let us hear it. But if you have to be inconvenienced, that's our problem, that's our biggest problem, nobody wants to be inconvenienced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I give you actually thirty seconds. Uh, anyone else? I see we got one on Zoom. Oh. Hey, ma'am, you have two, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Kim Spurgis, Amboy, Dearborn Heights. The only thing you guys might have to consider if you are gonna go that way is you might have to put an actual turn signal at the golf course, at Berwin. Because right now, there isn't one, but you, you know what I'm saying? So you'd have, they'd actually have a chance to turn down that way to get out.
Thank you.
Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. So I always talk about the police and our lack thereof. Um, I just wanted to let everyone here know that we had another police officer who was wrongly fired April twenty fifth of twenty twenty two, who was reinstated, or will be reinstated rather, and we have to give three years salary, which he deserves, totally. But again, because of our rotating police chiefs and our absent mayor, and the chaos he's caused with our police department, this is what's going on. I wanted everyone to be aware.
Uh, Dropkast, Columbia Street, just wanted to highlight on the school issue. Um, why don't we come up with a school zone? Like I said a couple of times, eliminate the Canfield Center, eliminate the fi- fire station, move Crestwood or Riverside over to that property. Put the fire station where Riverside is presently now.
You wanna support on Riverside? Move the school.
Move the school, build a new school.
Oh, love that.
Use the property as a school zone. Okay, like I said, eliminate Canfield, with the Riverside, move the school section over at Canfield property and the fire station. Once the uh Riverside school is torn down, move the fire station and the Canfield community center to that location, incorporate it into the Warren Valley property, and have one recreational system there.
You know much, you know much money it is to build a?
Well, there's, there's, there's these things that uh used to be called grant writers, uh, funding from uh grants. You know, so if we get a grant writer, or if we have one and knows what they're doing, we could get the funding.
Hey. I agree with you, but you don't have much money, I just sent the mail.
It's gotta cost you a lot of money.
Sixty million dollars.
Okay.
That's ten times, that's tenfold.
Okay.
For what, new school? Yeah, sixty million dollars for a new. I don't think there's grants for school anymore. More? I mean, the less. Yeah, Vince, no grants gonna get us that.
More bond if you want.
Well, we can pass out bonds. Well, there's gotta be funding somewhere, somebody's not asking the right questions. So, just a thought, but do a property spot. Yeah, so.
I appreciate you, Vince.
Food for thought.
Thank you. Hang on one second, Margaret. Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Good afternoon, council.
Please state your name.
Blake Perry, I live on Fenton, I'm I'm gonna just to address something. There was an issue where a person with autism got shot by a police officer, I didn't know if anybody saw that. Uh, I'm not even gonna speak on what the psychiatric health said about people with autism, but I think that law enforcement best needs to get a little bit credit, because when you're a disability people, it's very hard, so. As a person with experience, I said my own talking business, so when I do presentation, I use my experience. When I first moved here, I um just became my own guardian, so I had to deal with medication change and things happened and I had to communicate with law enforcement. And so going in there, and this is kinda funny, I think that this would probably get a lot, building this information by saying, I know this, I know that, to a point, it got really bad, like, how can I build this connection? I'm like, oh, I'll just interact my favorite superhero. When I interacted my favorite superhero, they were like, and they brought a female cop in, right, they brought a female cop in to deal with this situation. And I explained, you know, I do this, I do that, and they understood. And with that approach, I think it's important, because right now, there's a state thing where they're trying to fingerprint, and there's there, there just is the more education with law enforcement and people in general. So I I think that's really important, so I'm not gonna actually, I'm not gonna let you guys know what you're here on this. I'm pretty sure all the cops know. And by the way, that's a way that a person can build something with the community. And I think that when we educate law enforcement like that, we educate and then we have fun, because everybody has fun, like, who is this superhero? So, so other than that, I think, I think it's important, because I think when you look at different things, that's how you learn, so I'm out.
Thank you, sir. Blake, thank you very much, sir. I don't, yeah. I have two brothers.
They don't claim the third one.
Hey, ma'am, you got two minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. Do we have any updates? Do we know our plans? No. Roger, do we have any updates or any plans on the school zone safety, where we stand?
Well, I think if you wanna look at the school zone safety, um, we are looking at, um, one of the issues is the speeding and the actions of juveniles in the city. Um, in fact, I had a meeting today with uh Guardian City Family Resource Center, what they're doing um, in terms of uh dealing with implementing rules and regulations and positive um effects on the juvenile, uh teenager. We're also looking at, um, I think it's, school safety addresses a lot of issues, including the vaping, including the marijuana vaping, including the truancy, we're looking at all those, in fact, how to implement.
Do you know where we got, when we got the grant from Mr., like, where we got the grant and as far as that stuff goes?
Uh, the grant for what?
The school zone safety that we received?
I I wasn't involved in that, but I can chat with the mayor for you.
Okay, yeah, if I could just.
I think the dib was involved in that, but.
Okay, I'm just looking for updates, I mean, we're here, you know, another school year is gone, and I've been fighting for two years and still waiting. But I appreciate it, and if you hear anything, please let me know, okay?
Yeah, like I said, truancy, vaping, marijuana, the um, the school threats and the cyber bullying, the pictures getting sent around. We're trying to work on all that for the kids, so.
I appreciate it.
Part of the package.
Thank you so much.
Let's hear from the resident real quick. It's you again, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
My name is Luigi Peruzzi, live in Dearborn Heights on Plainfield Street. And I'm just following up to see if there's been any furtherance towards ordinance regarding the short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is it? And did it go to?
Plan, planning your zone, yeah, I did, I think it was presented to you and then it was referred to plan. Whether or not they had a meeting, I don't know.
We we put together a resolution.
That's right.
Resolution needs to go before the planning commission, planning commission will vote on it to make sure that it meets all its requirements. Once it's passed through planning, it'll come back to us for final discussion and then a final vote. Okay? Thank you very much. I think the next one is May eighth, I knew somebody that had, or or May, yeah, May eighth or May sixteenth or something like that.
It's on a Thursday, but I'm not quite sure.
Somebody had, was asking to get on the April meeting, and then they moved it to May, so I knew that there was a May meeting. May eighth is a Thursday? Yes, May eighth, gotta be on the May eighth planning commission meeting first. Thank you. And and the gentleman is the individual that lives on Plainfield that had the incident where Airbnb had over fifty different people in there, a fight broke out. And so he's just following back up, hundreds, hundred. Right around the block from me.
Go ahead. Okay, the first part of this discussion is gonna be as a resident, Winstonia Kennedy Street in Dearborn Heights. And I am going to agree with um former trustee Sue Kaminsky, it was a handshake between the county. It was supposed to be like continuation, I was in the audience, I think, at the time, and I know safety is why I got on the on the board, and for the reduced school zone on Beach Daily is the only one in the city, and we made that happen. But I would like to chat, talk with the chief to see how many tickets were actually, have actually been written there. I did notice that the traffic around there, the drop off and pickup, because they use my street, has drastically increased. So the kids are crossing on Beach Daily as well.
War zone.
Yeah, it it's, it's bad. So it is something that needs to be addressed in, like yesterday. So thank you, Crestwood School District. Um, on the second one, I want to, I know this is budget, but I had my budget hearing, and we discussed revenues. And after that, I have to give a shout out to um Rachel LaPointe, cuz she had posted something about revenues for business licensing. Remember, we said how it was going down, I could not go back in the G L to see beyond like the past two years. But I wanna thank Rachel for bringing that up, I wanna chat, tech, um, thank our deputy treasurer Garcia, cuz she allowed me to come in the um, the treasurer's office, run reports and cash receipting, um, so that I could see actually what was received in. There was thirty thousand dollars so far that has been received in in the treasurer's office. And and I don't know how the journalizing goes or anything, I mean, I know it gets jo- journalizing. But then I also have to thank our deputy clerk, um, Flamat, who used to work in the comptroller's office. And institutional knowledge is very important, I think you all know that. She remembers when she was in the comptroller's office, there is a disconnect between business licensing and uh the G L accounts. So what I have to, so I wanna shout out to Lori Kupchak, who helped me through this, as well as Michelle Lewis from Plant Moran. They're going to fix it, they're going to fix it, I don't know where it was.
What was the actual number?
Thirty thousand, approximately thirty thousand, what did we show, seven hun- seventy-seven hundred, I couldn't figure it out.
So it hasn't changed?
It's up thirty thousand.
Yeah, okay.
What we showed in Madi is going to update it once it comes to the final, so that you guys. What we showed in Madi is going to update it once it comes to the final, so that you guys get adequate, you know, the, the correct amounts.
I was saying like, what, what?
Exactly, exactly. And she posted this and you can see it went down. So it's like, that concerned me because we.
But that's not a real, that's not, obviously, that is not accurate, then.
This one, no, this one is not. So this one should be up here. This one should be thirty thousand. And Georgianne.
What's the highest uh, uh, on that graph?
Forty.
Okay, so.
Forty-one, if you go back to twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Big drop, though.
Oh, absolutely. So the next day, Georgianne ran our business licensing program to see how many um, right, business licenses we issued. And you, even if you did fifty, fifty dollars, I think it was, not seventy-seven hundred, okay? So we got it figured out. We just have to get it fixed.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's that one. And one last thing, today at four o'clock was the filing deadline for our city offices. Um. Candidates have until. Friday at four o'clock, if by any reason they want to withdraw from their candidacy. Right now, as it stands, we haven't heard final confirmation on all of the affidavits that I sent over today. Um, but we will have a primary um for one of the offices. I can't say the names on who it is, but um. That's, that's what we got so far.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening again, Zohar Abdalhadeh.
Now, you need to hurry, you have two minutes.
Less than two minutes. I have a question for Roger. We've been talking about the charter review for almost a year and a half. Resolution was passed. And you promised that last June of last year, you're going to have something. Uh, can you tell us where we are with this?
Yeah, I sent the letter into the Attorney General's Office. I'm waiting for them to come back with the approval for the language that has to go on the ballot. Uh, once I have that, it'll be put on the ballot. It has a sentence that first people will vote, that they have to approve. Uh, that they, they wanna put it on the ballot and have a vote on. And then it'll have, I think I, I combined also that exactly what the um, the nine members would be and everything else that we compose. Then you have to have the people running. I, I combined it, so people then will have to run for those nine positions.
Do you expect that we'll have something by November this year?
I, I, I think so. I will check. I have not checked this week, until I'll check next week.
Okay.
At the end of this week, I'll be turning General's Office and see.
Thank you. The second thing, did the city council uh. Reallocate the money for the, what do you call it, the nine-one-one center? We allocated three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars for that. Room two years ago. And what happened to it? Anybody?
Ali Deeb, Mr. Deeb said he was working on it. They had bids.
Mr. Deeb?
They're gonna start working on it. Remember?
Anybody knows where the money is?
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else on those bids?
Is the money available? You don't know? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I ask this honorable city council, please relocate this money.
Well, I mean, if it was allocated in the budget, it shouldn't.
I don't know if it exists, but I think it was spent already. I don't believe it isn't. You know, you can't check the line item. It's very easy. You can ask the comptroller. She'll tell you, or this is treasurer. So check on it and see where that three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars gone. Thank you.
So much. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move it over to Zoom. Barbara.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, councilpeople. Residents, I have two things. Um, first, I'd like to know when we're going to put our flags down at half-mast, because we lost Pope Francis. It's supposed to be half-mast everywhere for the president. Um, if you can get that taken care of. My second question. It is going to be about this billing that we have going on between the city versus. One of our council members, I'm gonna call her out, Denise Malnowski Maxwell. Um, we are still paying bills. I don't know who this Nan Berry is. Um, but there's.
I see you're referring from saying any names, please.
It's already written out. Okay, sorry. Okay, well, there's a, a bill. It's, I think it's on page thirty-seven. It's uh, three hours of recordings and Facebook. And I would like to know what is the total amount between these two. Residents, that this is a civil matter. We have paid out a lot of money, the residents have. This is not our problem. This is a civil matter. And I would just like to know if anybody can answer me. Why are we still paying? What is the total amount we have paid? And how are we gonna recoup that money back? Are we gonna make these people do civil service? Are we gonna get our money back?
Counselor Chair, I will speak with your permission, just briefly, on that issue.
Go ahead. I'll have Roger answer your question.
There's a false narrative being circulated that anyone's bills are being paid for any one citizen. If a person, any person, council member, mayor, anybody violates an ordinance. And they don't comply with the ordinance requirements, they get a ticket issued. If they have not, then that's our job is to prosecute. That's what we do. We're not prosecuting on behalf of any particular individual. We are following the ordinance that was issued. Therefore, it, it is fully a city matter. And, and the conflict of interest comes up, as I represent the city count, uh, the city council and our office does. That's why it's transferred out. To another city that's not picked by us. It's picked by the court administration that controls the Third Circuit Court. That they have to decide if this will be approved. They have to decide and approve the lawyers. That would be prosecuted on behalf of the city. Not any particular individual based on a con- based on an ordinance violation. That's what you're dealing with, so I wanna correct any false narratives that are out there. So the Third Circuit, the Third Circuit approved. The law firm that's doing it, the judge that's doing it, and the court where it's located. That's what the city's paying for. It would be here if it wasn't a, a councilman.
Oh, oh, am I still on?
Yes.
Okay. M- my question is, on all these bills from uh, I think it's Halman or whatever. Uh, for the last few council meetings, it, it shows. Said person and said councilperson. Their names, so it is a matter of public record that we are seeing this, that we, that the residents are paying this bill.
I don't, I don't think you understood what I said. You want me to? So, so Barb, let, let me, let me explain to you guys a quick scenario. Let me give you guys a quick scenario on this. We had, and, and you'll be able to speak on it, councilwoman, in a second.
Okay.
But I want you to know briefly, cuz I went back and I looked at this. We had a former councilmember that got into a fight with the resident. It couldn't be prosecuted in Dearborn Heights. Dearborn Heights hired, or whatever this prosecution was happening. They hired out an, an attorney. Represented the city of Dearborn Heights. To go out and prosecute this outside of Dearborn Heights. Regardless of who the two parties are, whether you're the mayor, clerk, treasurer, a councilwoman. If the city is saying, we are not gonna prosecute this in Dearborn Heights because of a potential conflict of interest. Take it outside of Dearborn Heights. The city is paying for that resource. From, 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 and I even reached out to this former councilman. Said, hey, what's going on? He said, the same exact scenario happened to me. He said, I, the city had to, he goes, my name was on there. Cuz you know, when I looked at the backup, I was like, man, what is going on here? I called this uh, former councilman. Um, obviously, it settled and it settled in Dearborn. Dearborn Heights had the bill. Dearborn Heights outsourced that prosecution. And gave it to Dearborn, and they had to pay for it.
Okay.
Whatever this law firm that they hired to prosecute outside of Dearborn Heights, you gotta pay them. This isn't, I don't think it's about picking and choosing and taking sides. This is Dearborn Heights saying, we don't want it in Dearborn Heights' court. Take it to another community, cuz you're not allowed. Take it to another community and, and whatever the bill is, we'll pay for it. Here's this attorney that doesn't work and pays for it. From what I get, understanding, now regardless of the emotions that's stuck in this, I know it sucks. There's a colleague of mine that's sitting here and it's, my name is on the backup and, and it makes things, you know, ugly across the board. But the truth is, Dearborn Heights made the right move by saying, we're not gonna prosecute this in Dearborn Heights. Judge David Turfey and Judge Polacki are not gonna look at this. Take it to another person.
Okay. All right, I get it. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
You explained it.
And I know this was an issue too, you know, back in, you know, when, when the former councilmember had somewhat of an issue, but. When that, when we pull up the fund transfers and current claims, anybody that wants that, councilmember to speak on it, they can.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Go ahead, Councilor.
Um, yeah, I'd like to speak on this. First of all, the attorney fees that are being paid by the city of Dearborn Heights. Are for the city of Dearborn Heights. None of mine have been paid. None of my expenses have been taken care by Dearborn Heights. That's been handled by me and me personally and only me. Um, I did comply with the ordinance. I did nothing wrong.
I don't want to. Point of order. Point of order.
I applied for a permit, like any resident is allowed to. I was approved and I paid the fee before the fence was installed. I then installed the fence. Um, I do have a survey, in a recent survey, not an old one that was done years ago. A recent survey showing the fence is on my property lines. Um, I have done all the inspections and all of them have been approved. Um, this is ridiculous to spend this kind of money for a ticket that would have been a hundred and thirty dollars. If I had truly done something wrong. A hundred and thirty dollar ticket, we're up to how many thousands? And not including what come out of my pocket, too. Um. There, you know. There, this is a private dispute between two neighbors. Why did we pay two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars on this bill? With phone calls, with her and emails. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. They're you, they're weaponizing the city to come after me. At the residents' expense, and that's not fair to the residents. Like I said, my expenses have been taken care of by myself personally. Also, too, when you start getting into reviewing my Facebook, it's no longer about offense. It's personal. So please understand that, too.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, nothing from the audience. Thank you, Councilwoman, you all said. Any more uh, public comments? Do you have any more on Zoom, Madam Clerk? Thank you very much. We're moving on to number six, fund transfer and current claims. We have a motion. Councilman Sob.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims and ACH wire transfers six dash one through. Six dash thirty-eight is submitted.
Second, a motion by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Conston. Any discussion? Or should we take a vote?
I'll vote for a vote, please.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Any discussion? I see none. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on. Uh, to number eight, reports from Mayor. Annapolis High School Homecoming Parade, twenty twenty-five. Councilman Conston?
Thank you. That the Dearborn Heights City Council granted permission to Annapolis High School to hold their annual homecoming parade. On Friday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. At five P M was staging to begin at four fifteen P M. Police Hader and Fire Chief Brogan have approved the route and will provide services as they require, as outlined in eight A.
Second.
Uh, right, motion by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilwoman Nancy Brier. Any discussion? I see none. Whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Council Chair, we're on number nine now. Thank you, Councilwoman. Sorry, I stepped out for a quick second. Our next up is Treasure Hicks Clay and City uh, debt depositors update bank documents.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman Brier.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the treasurer to update the bank signers to include Mayor Bill Vazey, interim comptroller Paul Vanderplow. City Clerk Lynn Insenya.
Anything from the audience, please?
Lisa Hicks, as outlined in nine A.
I, I, before I approve this, I have a question.
Well, let's, let's second it for discussion.
Second for discussion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion?
Um. One second. The interim comptroller, uh, comptroller, weren't we supposed to approve? The approval for, for this, to sign documents?
That's what it's saying here. Update the banks. This is what we're voting on.
That's supposed to be a motion submitted.
Yes, that's what you would do if you decide to approve it, cuz it is your option. Um, as the city council's honorable body. So you would always approve any signers, any changes to signers, any addition. Um, so because our former comptroller has resigned and left the city, we have an interim comptroller. And so for that person to be added, or update the signer card so that person can sign checks, for example. Um, that would need your approval. Otherwise, um, Madam Clerk would end up signing all the checks.
Council, uh, so that.
Council Chair?
Council, Councilwoman. Councilman Ahmad.
I mean, I think she answered, thank you, Councilwoman. I think she, you answered my question. So basically, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, she signs all the checks now, since we don't have a.
The, the way the charter reads, it's the mayor, the comptroller, or the clerk, and the treasurer.
Uh, she can sign checks, too?
That is correct. That's the requirement per charter.
Okay.
Yeah, so, three signatures. Council Chair?
Yep.
Obviously, if we add anybody else on besides the ones that you named, that would be a violation of the charter. We all took an oath to follow that charter. So at this time, do you feel comfortable with the changes that are being requested, to add extra people that do not comply with the charter rules?
Well, we have, in my opinion, we have to follow the charter, but I'm not quite sure from understanding where it's a violation, because we. You know, this is the, the person is the interim comptroller. So you, as a councilbody, can choose, right? To say yea or nay. It's your option. What I do is I administrate whatever you legislate. I've said that before. If you're asking me if I'm comfortable, I have to be professional and work with, you know, whoever is appointed. It cannot be my personal feelings or anything else, right? I have to be professional.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed?
No.
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 Adam, I mean. Adam, I mean, let's still put on a roll call. Thank you.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Denise Malnowski Maxwell?
No.
Hassan Sob?
No.
Robert Conston?
No.
Ian Robeydun?
No.
Motion is defeated.
Treasurer explains new bank accounts, Scouts of America Police Explorer. Council Chair? Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized Treasurer Hicks Clay into opening a new bank account at the request of the Police Department. For the Scouts of America Explorer Program as outlined in nine B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yep.
Uh, I do wanna thank the treasurer for working on this. I wanna thank the Police Department and the chief. Uh, this is an amazing program. They've been long waiting for this, um. I mean, many cities have it, and I'm glad that we're gonna have this program in the city of Dearborn Heights. Uh, thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up is nine C, Treasurer Hicks Clay and Debt Management Policy.
Council Chair?
Councilman Sob.
Over the Dearborn Heights City Council received, known filed. The city of Dearborn Heights Debt Management Policy is outlined in nine C. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussions? And ask, hearing, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Also, Angela Vinagas's birthday. Happy birthday, Angela.
Oh. Are we singing again?
No, we're not gonna sing happy birthday. Next up is Comptroller Shepherd, Fire Department Budget Amendment.
Council Chair? I moved to the Dearborn Heights. You said this?
Yep, that's what I meant.
The Dearborn Heights City Council approved the amendments to the Fire Department Budget. These amendments have a net zero effect on the fund balance, as these are movements between line items within the department as outlined in nine D.
Second.
Motion made by Council, Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion? Did we? Did we have any? Is the fire chief here?
Good evening, Council. I'm Deputy Fire Chief Vaskin Badlo, so.
How you doing? Can you answer some of this for us here? Pardon me? Can you answer some of this for me real quick?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's saying here that this is um, the amendment is moving from line item to line item with a zero effect to the fund balance. Um, can you tell me from where we're removing, where we're adding? And is there anything being removed from any other department outside of the Fire Department?
No, this is all within the Fire Department and it's gonna be within the, the current budget as you see on the left column there. And we worked uh together, the administration, to uh move funding over from those into other line items. So nothing more than that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, nine E. D P W Director Nancy, D P W Highway Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the D P W Highway Budget as outlined in nine E.
Thank you. Need a second? No second? Get on our level. Next up, Fire Chief Brogan, Fire Department Budget Amendment. Next up's nine F.
Yep.
You want me to read the whole thing?
You can just read the nine F, the nine F.
Okay, uh, does the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendment to the Fire Department budget as outlined in nine F?
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Conston. I do want to just point out a couple of things here. A lot of these things here are, are requests based on the city council. If you look at the line items, where per C B A motion twenty four thirty eight, the budget accounted for ten percent increase, but it was actually seventeen percent increase. Secondly, we all said we want to see uh a cleanup to, for two fire stations and gear racks. Um, and then number three, where injuries were slower than anticipated, which was the cause for a lot of the higher of the overtime. I mean, the reality is certain things on here have to be approved. I know, you know, we, we all agree to be fiscally responsible and say we don't want to use the fund balance, which I wholeheartedly agree. We can't say, you know, we can't cheer, be a cheerleaders on the sideline saying we, we want to make sure that the safety and wellbeings of the firefighters is our number one priority, but when it comes time to pay for it, we're like, hold up. What I can tell you is that was never in the budget until we were always gonna go to fund balance for, for our firefighter. So for me, I'm okay with saying that I'm willing to support this because we know it's going to the health and safety and the wellbeing of our firefighters.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I respect that, the cleanup for the fire station, that's fine.
And the raises, which we all voted yes on.
Correct, but the raises came after the fact of the budget. It was after the budget.
Well, the.
The administration, the mayor's office, or city attorney, nobody's been transparent.
No, they haven't.
Nobody has. There's millions of dollars missing in the city. And for us to approve one department and not approve the other, it's not saying to turn the sideline as a cheerleader. It's across the board. We're not gonna borrow money from a rainy day fund and we're not gonna raise taxes on residents. And for that, and, and for that, until we get actual numbers in the city where money is or where money went, it's uh by fully supporting our first responders, our fire, our police and D P W. I can't support anything coming out of fund balance because we know the mismanagement in the city and we have no idea where the money went. By us putting Band-Aids and throwing to cover overtime, things are getting paid right now. Nobody's getting short, but again, every year we have two new controllers. Every year we have a new H R. Every, you, you can't get an email response from the city regarding budgets. There's millions of dollars missing in the city. Bluntly, there is millions missing. Where did it go? Where is it? It's not the firefighters are taking it, nor the Police Department, nor D P W. Where is it? Well, for us to approve something for one department, not the other.
Again, and, and I, it's not that we're shooting the firefighters over any other department. I want to make it clear. What we're saying here was, we said we want environmental cleanup for two fire stations and the gear rack. Which we said, hey, people are living in a mole. Go out and fix it. They paid for it. They fixed it. We got enough. We got, we got a budget for that. And that, so like if that had to come out of fund balance, I'm, what I'm saying, me, me, not everybody, me, because we never budgeted for it. I'm okay saying, like you, I'm okay to say that that is okay to come from fund balance.
We can, uh, Council Chair.
As far, and, 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 and it's just one more thing, Councilman. I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off. And the ten percent increase, which again, this was the administration under budgeting and something. The truth is, no, they were approved the seventeen percent increase, not a ten percent. So we're short on seven percent.
I, I believe they should get a thirty percent increase. I'm not against that. What I'm saying is that we're spending nearly eight hundred thousand dollars a year on illegal opinions. We have an attorney that can't even write an opinion. So why don't we cut that and give that to the firefighters?
We can.
Then let's do that. We'll, we'll cut that budget out completely and give it to the firefighters.
Has a resolution coming from you now?
I, I will put a resolution today. It's under rules. I'll put a resolution forward right now. Council Chair. Big facts. Thank you, Council Chair. I do respect where you're coming from, but I do agree with Councilman Sob. We have to be fair across the board. I know you mentioned about the environmental cleanup, but this is like twenty two thousand. Now we're talking here, um, almost seven hundred thousand.
Seven eighty two thousand.
Yeah, almost seven hundred thousand and with seventy percent that the administration messed up on, I mean, that's a big thing. I mean, like they messed up, I think they need to work on something to fix their, their mistake. Uh, to tap into the fund balance, I mean, we just, we had that discussion with the treasurer last time and I think by June, we're not even, I don't think we're gonna even have that money. So, uh, I mean, we have, I don't think even we have it right now, to be honest with you. According to that chart that we were given last time, I think by May first probably will be, I mean, I, I mean, I mean, very close, very close.
Estimate's office.
So like I think Councilman Sob said, I think we do have to be fair across the board with that.
I'm, I'm okay with amending it then and at least same for the twenty two thousand dollars.
I'm okay with that.
Because look, at the end of the day, we have to pay certain things. We knew that that was coming from the fund balance.
I mean, I, 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 my, myself, I did approve that and I'm okay to amend this to just make.
Uh, what we could do is we can wait till next week and Councilman Sob can bring forward his resolution.
I'm gonna bring eight hundred thousand dollars forward from legal opinions they were paid for every year. It's ridiculous.
Okay. Can I say something?
No, you can't.
That's stupid. Uh, that really is, is ungrounded and has no intelligence behind it before you started accusing people.
Let me speak, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. Did I name? Say anything of any intelligence?
Did I?
Yeah.
I named you by name. They're not worth it.
Me naming you. You're not worth it either.
It's a clone.
Bounce them, please. Point of order. I just want you to know something. The, let me tell you something. And this is me, like me starting to realizing, they want a response out of you like this.
It's, but I'm not talking to him.
I know.
But you're giving him the room to talk. I never asked him for a response, Council Chair.
Calm down for a second. Don't respond. That's it. All you gotta do.
It's a sound system.
Point of order. That's it.
He doesn't, he doesn't know what point of order is.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for nine F. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed?
No.
Yeah, no.
Ready?
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Council Chair.
It's, we got a motion.
Oh, okay, right.
Let me do it. Hassan Sab.
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Nancy Brier? Leaning but no. Um, Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Robert Conston?
No.
Moby Dun?
No.
Motion defeated.
Thank you. Nine G, I T Director Cooper and Police Chief Hader, purchase and payment of dispatch equipment. Council Chair. Councilman. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of the following required equipment for police vehicles and dispatch to remain C J I S compliant. Thirty five Dell Rugged Pro fourteen laptops, thirty five uh D S Dell docks, thirty five Brothers Rugged printers, uh, thirty five Brother uh U S B cables, Brother car adapters, Brothers uh Premier Service Plan, Brothers Active Docking Mount Station with power and U S B Honeywell Scanner Kit and Dell Optoplex Tower Plus. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from Federal Forfeiture Funds. G L account number two six five, three three zero, eight three one, two six five as outlined in nine G.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? From Federal Forfeiture Fund.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have a hundred and thirty thousand plus in the?
Uh, yes.
Forfeiture fund?
We have about two million dollars in the.
Actually, we have uh twenty five million.
No.
No, we have, we're only budgeting that much. It was two point two million dollars.
There's three accounts, so Council Chair.
And that's what they had in here.
I know, that's all that was budgeted for that year. It only gave you that. Right? This, I think that's the bet. This is the balance, isn't the balance for this year?
About two point two million? Thank you. Yeah, I just went through this discussion. I called her.
Uh, Council Chair, Treasury, how many forfeiture fund accounts is there? One?
There's three different accounts.
And all of them have funds in them or? Okay.
So Council Chair, can you say that again? But, but the money? So if there's two point two million dollars.
Okay.
We don't, we don't say we have two point two million dollars, we're gonna use it on this year. We say of the two point two million dollars, we're gonna use three hundred thousand dollars for this fiscal year. So we budget three hundred thousand dollars and you can only use it with that because you're budgeting for it through that fiscal year.
Okay.
If you want to now tap back into the more into of that money, you have to do an amendment to the budget and, and transfer.
So what was the number for this year? Two point two?
No, that's what we have in total.
Okay, what was the budget for this year? Do we use? So what's that twenty five coming from?
Forfeiture fund, from what we budgeted. That's twenty five million. Not twenty five million.
This is written wrong then.
It's, it's roughly a hundred and forty thousand.
No, no, I mean, uh, I have it on the backup here where it says the account has that much money in it.
No.
Twenty five million?
Two, two point two million dollars is in, in, put aside for how much we can use in forfeiture fund. The general ledger is twenty five million. They took that money that, but you say they took three hundred thousand and they added it into the general ledger. And now they're using, obviously it's being tracked through the general ledger. The general ledger has twenty five million.
Okay, that's what threw me off. I think we, because you asked last time, like every account to get, to have the balance wherever it's left. Yeah, so this wasn't provided here then.
But we don't have no twenty five million dollars left in the general ledger, do we? We don't have twenty five million dollars left there.
Okay. Uh, Council Chair.
Yeah.
I mean, since we have the I T director, we keep, we keep getting disconnected for some reason. I have to keep referring.
Me too.
It, it's civic, it's civic plus issue. It's not, it's not, it's civic plus. I apologize.
Thank you. But it works on your, on the phones, it works fine. No, my phone was the worst.
Yeah, it's, it's, they put out a status that they're having issues. They're working on it.
Okay, Council Chair. So we're going back to that computers. This is the same one we approved last time to.
That, that was that test one. This now is to outfit all of our vehicles and actually the five computers are for the dispatch station. No, in there, this is a, a complete refresh uh for all the police vehicles and dispatch, which is required by September. We have to have these in place.
So I think you were happy with the test results after taking those computers?
Yep, yep. I made one slight change uh in the configuration of the computer and I, and I worked with um Dell to make sure we got what we needed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, Council Chair, I mean, uh, just to have a request, I mean, if we can, uh, like next time when we, you know, ask for different stuff, can we have like add, like a total at the end, like see exactly how much it total amount for everything? That would be kind of like us adding all the stuff up.
I, I thought I, I'll be honest, I thought I did. I know Mariana helped uh at the very end of this with this. I don't know why the, the total in there.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't still here like. Thank you though.
So I apologize.
I know, thank you, Director. I'm all set.
Any other discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right.
I T Director Cooper, Budget Amendment related to increased cost of telecommunications landlines.
Timeout, Council Chair, I'm sorry. I know.
The more, we haven't, can't talk on it till we read a motion or it's dead on our end.
I'm just, I, I, is this the correct uh?
Motion for it? Yeah, exactly.
It's all about words.
I know. We, we have the discussion on second.
Okay.
It's not going through the fund balance. They're taking money away from different department. Nine H. Council Chair. Councilman Conston. I moved that the uh Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following budget amendments to cover the current cost increase of telecommunications land lies, land lines as outlined in nine H. Support. Motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I got a quick one here. I see here ordinance, ordinance salary. So one ordinance officer salary, one ordinance officer salary, ordinance enforcement, G I S, G I S, uh fringe benefits from the building and engineering. Um, and all of this we're doing, which I, speaking outside of the box. What's our plan when we want to pay for an ordinance officer that wants to get hired right now, right before the holiday, which is gonna happen? There, there was still in the budget for two ordinance officers in there by taking one and only having two more, basically two months left of the, of the year. What is left in there potentially could cover uh the ordinance.
But what if ordinance needs a part-time employee? What if ordinance needs? I mean, this is the season right now. We're about to enter into a season where the ordinance department is going to need this money. I mean, I get it. Telecommunication needs this money. But like, we, it's great to have all this communication in the world, but what are we gonna do when we see blade across the entire city?
My, I'll say my defense again, we, we left the money in there. I know he worked with this part-time budget uh last time. Um, we don't make these payments for telecommunications. We lose internet and we're not gonna be able to serve. We're not gonna take phone calls. We're not gonna be able to pay bills or anything because we are gonna lose internet. These fire buildings are all gonna lose connections.
Is any money being used from fund balance?
Nope, not at all, sir. We, we sat down, you asked us to look at, you know, being creative where we can try to grab a little bit of money here and there. And we, we did what you asked. It is, trust me, this eats at me having to do this. What is the city-owned property? Um, that was a line, that's a, a budget line item. When I sat down at the mayor's office, they, they said that was in their, in their budget. I'll be honest, I don't know exactly what that fund is used for.
Yeah, yeah. But we. Council Chair. Uh, same thing here, Director. Like we don't have a total.
Exactly. If you look at the, the very last uh one. Um, where it says the, the do, uh, the do it, uh telecommunications and mine just, the, refresh mine. Two twelve, four sixty four, seventy nine is what all would get put into there to cover.
So this is the total for all the numbers?
Requested amount. You add it all up. Yep.
So that remaining balance after amendment.
We're all said and done. I literally have like maybe about fifty dollars in that account once we finish, once my projected payments.
I thought we'd do this on the Fire Department.
I'm not the Fire Department.
So how come here it says sixty seven thousand remaining balance?
Because we, we still got the May and June to pay for.
Okay. Any other discussions?
Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Police Chief Hader, twenty twenty four Justice Assistance Grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the acceptance of the twenty twenty four Justice Assisting Grant in the amount of eighteen thousand thirty eight dollars, which was previously approved by City Council Motion twenty four dash four eight zero and authorized the mayor to sign the grant agreement as outlined in nine dash I.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Conston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director Z, Parks and Recreation Budget Amendment. Council Chair, Councilman. Conston. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the Parks and Recreation Budget as outlined in nine J.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion? Hearing none.
You know, Council Chair, uh, director, that's uh, where it says city-owned property is that? What count is that again?
Same account that we just talked about, I T money.
How much do we have in that?
It's, I think current budget is seventy five thousand dollars. Um, if you look at this past previous um amendments we brought in, you see a big reduction in the amount of money we need to now like eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty one. I can tell you, I'm relentless in finding things that need to be corrected and wrong. And it goes on and on and on, just like we have with all of those reimbursements. By the end of the week, this week, we've been exhausted ourselves. We'll add two hundred thousand dollars to that reimbursement account. This week, we've been exhausted ourselves, we'll add two hundred thousand dollars to that reimbursement account. That'll bring it up to three hundred thousand in two weeks, and in our reimbursement account. It has, it will have a balance of four hundred and sixty-six thousand when all the checks arrive. That's just, that was just for us doing paperwork, but I mean, everything, I'm cleaning up, there, there's more than I can describe. And, um, the sign, that's, that's just another one off my list. Um, and getting just old bills paid, things are cleared out, we're looking at July to, to start this all out and, and get it all cleared up.
Councilor Chair, I see, I think it's just still the same dilemma here, we, we're tapping into the fund balance with this one too, so.
Um, I understand that when these checks arrive for our reimbursements, since they are so unfortunately old. That they're not actually credited to that account, and they could be used if we want to, so out of that hundred thousand dollars. We could probably find eighteen thousand, and clear this up and make sure we get our grant, so we don't lose it. And, um, put this one behind us, so I can just check that off the list, and, and we'll just, we'll just keep going.
You're saying you wanna use eighteen thousand instead, is all you're asking for?
Uh, eighteen thousand four fifty-one, the rest is covered by the grant.
We're talking to sixty-three thousand and the forty-four thousand, this is covered by the grant?
The forty-four thousand is the, uh, forty-six twenty-four, yeah.
So, what about the caper alley, the first one, what's up for it?
I think that's the to, that's the total of the whole project.
Between the two of them?
Yes.
Councilor Chair.
This Council.
My question is, um, Wayne County reimbursement will cover part of marquee expenses.
Mm-hmm.
How much will they not be covering?
The eighteen thousand four fifty-one.
That's it. Councilor Chair. We're also on mitigation regarding this, sir.
Thank you.
And, and we are, we are working on that solution, and we hope to have something shortly, so that will not, that will not be factored in.
Can you do me a favor, maybe next week you can bring it back to us, uh, with just the eighteen thousand dollars, so we can get, we can put this behind them.
Yeah, that's, that was our plan, we're hoping to have it for tonight, but it just didn't happen.
It's okay.
All right. Councilor Chair, before, before he leaves, Councilor Chair, uh, with your permission. I think we do have to address that lawsuit that's pending, because I believe it affects the number of grant money, or monies from Wayne County. And it's in danger of costing us.
Wayne County?
Number of, uh, he, he could speak, um, our CPW.
Let's get in contact if you need to, I can, I can, uh. I can make some contact with the Parks Director there, known very well.
Okay.
Um, just say the hey, like, give us some time, we're figuring things out.
True, it, it's just, we're down to our, we've, we've asked for a second extension. Uh, we're down to the line, uh, on this, we don't know if they'll give an extension, so you'll have to approve an extension. Then it'll have to go to the Wayne County Commission to get approved, and it's gonna be a tight schedule for all us to get all of that done. So, that's why I'm trying to run and get this all cleaned up as much as we can, and we can see where we're at at the next council meeting.
We'll talk.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Anything that comes to the fund balance is very hard for this council to say yes. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
I thought we were referring to that.
Yeah, we have to amend the motion, would you like, Councilman Constance, would you like to amend your motion to refer back to administration? Yes. Okay, we, can I get a second on that, Councilman?
I'll second it.
All in favor to refer back to administration, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Police Chief Hader, Police Department Budget Amendment.
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the following amendments to the Police Department Budget to correct monies erroneously posted. To general ledger accounts, and authorize the controller to amend the budgets, general ledger accounts accordingly, as outlined in nine K. From the state training funds, one oh one dash three hundred dash nine six two dot zero one zero, in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred. To M C O L E S C P E funds, one oh one dash zero 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 dash six three six dot zero one six. From city training funds, one oh one three hundred dash nine six two dash zero zero zero, in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars eighty-seven cents. Which would go to state training funds, one oh one three hundred dash nine six two dash zero one zero. And from training, city training funds, one oh one dash three hundred. It's, yeah, but what's M Coles?
Keep going.
Okay, Michigan something or other. From city training funds, one oh one dash three hundred dash nine six two dot zero zero zero, in the amount of sixty-one thousand. To M Coles, uh, C P E funds, one oh one dash zero 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 dash six three six dot zero one six.
Support. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Constance, any discussion on that? Councilor Chair.
Well, real quick, um, if I may, Councilman. I, I think Police Chief, uh, Hader, for putting this forward, and putting the account numbers. And putting the amount, saying it's coming from the state training fund to M quote C P E fund. But I also requested, like, a balance, okay, this is the balance that we have, that we're using, how much is remaining? This is the balance that's going into that has this amount. And the only person that did this was Director of, of our library, Director McCaffrey, is the only one that did that. It's like, we can't table it, Councilor Chair, until it's corrected. Hang on, guys, real, like, it's just, aye, why is always gotta be a bicker back and forth, it's just such an easy yes. Because, like, nobody likes to follow direction, and they, they just wanna slap anything at the council, we have to come back to this. Yeah, I mean, to me, I, I'd like to see this table.
Okay.
So, you can give us the right information, tell us the balance, how much you're taking things out, we already stripped the ordinance department out of their bal, out of their budget. Absolutely terrible, terrible. When you see Councilman, former Councilman Muscat, Rangel Venegas, or Victor Prosky up here screaming and yelling at you guys, just remember, we cut that budget. Oh. Uh, I mean, we didn't use fund balance. Thank you. I mean, to me, it's like, I don't know what the balance is, I don't know what's coming out, what's coming in, I can't verify with the Treasury Department, I don't wanna see it. For me, I'm a no vote, but there's a motion on the table.
So, shall I amend it to say, uh, it's tabled until we have balance?
We can refer it back to administration, but I want to hear.
That's, that's it.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Brier, would you like to refer this back to administration?
Yes, please.
Councilman Constance, will you second that?
Yes.
All in favor, please state aye to refer back.
Aye.
Aye. All state aye?
Yes.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Let's do it again, one, two, three, all state aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Police Chief Hader, Police Department Overtime Budget Amendment.
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
I'll make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following amendment to the Police Department overtime budget as outlined in nine L.
Second, Councilor Chair.
Motion made by Councilwoman Briers, seconded by Councilman Constance, the last side's pretty popular today. Any discussion?
Yes, Councilor Chair, can we refer this, again, this is coming out of fund balance.
Yeah.
We, we don't show current budget.
This is a request.
Mm-hmm.
The current budget is eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, they're requesting an additional four hundred thousand.
That was correct.
Correct.
We referring it back?
No, I'd rather take this for a vote.
The right thing to do, sir, indeed, to refer back to administration, say, find the money elsewhere, like you did in everything else. Rather than. I'd like to refer this, if that's okay, Councilwoman Brier, would you like to?
Yes.
Motion made by Councilwoman Brier to refer this Councilman Constance to you second?
Yes.
Refer this back to administration, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Councilor Chair, Baydun, Warren Valley Golf Course Parking Lot Sublease Agreement, refer this back to, go study session.
Right.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, to refer back to a study session regarding the parking lot. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries, George, let's get together on that tomorrow, actually, Thursday, because tomorrow we got a budget on my head, it's gonna be spinning. Thank you. Next up, petition from Citizens, Ordnance and Resolutions Communications, new business here is Irwin's Auto Sales.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Ir- Ir- Irwin's Auto Sales Inc. at two three seven zero six Van Boren. As outlined in thirteen A, support?
Motion made by Councilman Dobbs, seconded by Councilman Ahmad.
Councilor Chair, yes, I spoke with ordinance today and coming about, I think they, uh, they cleaned up and they got an email.
It's, can we have you come up to the?
Forty M, please. Yeah, we got with them last week, and now they told me to move some cars, we had to be able to get a fire truck, an ambulance, police car in the lot. They removed cars, they striked the lot, they opened up both gates, so now you can get in and out both sides. We told them if it, uh, stays like this, we'll continue to, uh, let them get their business license, if we have any changes, we'll come back to you. And, uh, we'll go a different route, but right now, they did a lot in the last week, which I was pretty surprised.
Thank you.
Director LaFevre, uh, and I'm gonna ask you, and you're a diplomatic guy, please stand top of this.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we don't wanna only have this being done, you know, right around renewal time.
I actually went to Sod's Auto Lot today as well, they had a couple of things that we discussed with the prior director that they weren't doing. And they took care of that right away this morning as well, so I'm saying.
And you don't wanna just condisgust with them, picket them.
Yep.
Put them in their pockets, and it happens again, we're shot, you know, the script, and they're like. You know, you, you, Dearborn Heights has been too nice, and you know what happens when you're nice, you're getting stepped on. You know, like, we're, we're constantly getting stepped on by residents, because we're allowing people to, to, to just run over all of our ordinances, run through our neighborhoods, blow through stop signs. reckless drive, we're getting stepped on because of things like this.
Well, we're at record tickets right now, so we're, this month alone, we're gonna, so, it's, it's made last year's, we're, we're on a, I mean, we're not letting up, so.
We, we need to have stronger enforcements, yeah.
I just actually wanna give, um, kudos, kudos to the director here, I called in last week regarding a couple of new properties over. Getting built, the disaster that was in front of him, and I see today, I went by there, there was garbage bags. Yeah, he came by the front desk, I told him, the bricks all have to be cleaned up as well, he's waiting for his contractor to come back to that, they're not done. Um, so, we're gonna stand top there as well, I appreciate it, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'd like to hear from Councilman Wanso, if he doesn't mind, I don't know if. It's not, it's not, it's not been done right, so let's hear from him. He's, he's calling, asking his wife to tone it down or his kids something.
Exactly.
Are you still at Big Boys?
Uh, nope.
He's in the, in the, in the closed location.
Yeah, I found the wifi.
Oh, nice, okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Well, let's just hope that they keep this up, um, uh, just not for, for, you know, just for a couple of weeks or, or a month. We have to stay on top of them, and, uh, the upcoming, uh, license renewal for the state post. I checked them out, very fine, it's standard Smith. And, uh, so, let's, let's just hope that the ordinance stays on top of this. And keep that established, Irwin's. And, and, and compliance with the, uh, ordinance, I'm getting an echo, that's why I'm having, I'm trying, I'm trying to talking. But, um, I'll, I'll have a comment during the comments section.
All right.
Thank you.
It's not, not quite anymore, because you're all coming with us.
Councilor Chair.
Thank you, yeah.
Could I ask when their license it finishes, when does it, uh?
You renew every year.
Cancel?
Doesn't cancel, you renew every year.
Right.
Can it be revoked?
Yeah, every business gets a one-year renewal license, in the, in June.
We can attach a, a thing with a recheck of it in a month or so?
I mean, that's on, that would be on his, that's, that's his rule.
We'll stay on topic, guarantee that.
Alright.
Any other discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can the license be revoked after it's been renewed?
Uh.
And it be revoked after it's been renewed?
Oh, yeah. If they're not compliant, they can. They can, they can be taken to court for, there's a, a court process and whatnot, but yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, is the business license renewal for the state post in number two three two American Legion there.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for state post number two thirty-two. American Legion at twenty-three eight five zero military as outlined in thirteen dash.
Second.
Second. Motion made by, I mean, there's so many, second, by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Brier. Councilwoman Brier, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Wanso gives it the thumbs up, alright, so means he inspected it, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I said that twice, forgive me, you guys throwing me off, give him out, give him muted. Alright, next up, we have, uh, comments from Councilmembers, I'm gonna have Councilman Wanso go first, since he's been away with his family on vacation. I don't wanna keep him any longer in this meeting, that he doesn't have to be, and I know he said he had a quick announcement, so, Councilman, give your, uh, give your thoughts.
Well, thank you, um, one thing I observed, uh, by listening to these meetings is, uh, uh, I, I, it, it reaffirms what the residents say about our meetings, they're pretty, uh, I don't say comical, but, uh, they're, they're pretty abnormal with all the interruptions going on, when you're just, when you're listening to them and not there, it's a whole different, uh.
Oh, yeah.
The meetings, um, but the IT, the situation. I think, uh, we neglected to do the right thing, any contract we sign should be carried on through the entire, uh, budget year. Uh, we shouldn't have, you know, a certain part of the year, two or three months left in the budget, and get a price increase. You know, we bailed out the, uh, IT department, and awarding that money, and losing our ordinance, ordinance money. Any contract we sign should be, have a, you know, some kind of language in there that says this contract is good through the budget year. You know, and, uh, cause, you know, what, what's gonna make it, this from happening, every contract we sign, oh, there's a price increase. You know, it should be guaranteed no price increase for the entire budget year. I hate to see that, you know how, you know how passionate I am about the ordinance department? And to lose a chance of getting any ordinance officers for the next two or three months really hit home with me, I'm really, I was really saddened about that.
I want you to know, Councilman, I don't mean to cut you off, but that money was either gonna go into the general fund, and we weren't gonna know where it was, was going, because come this June, we're gonna have to rebudget for those positions again, so what they, all they were gonna do is take that money, put it in the general fund, and we have no idea what happened to it. At least this point, we kinda know where it went, that's just, that was my thought on why I said yes, you know, and to be able to tell you that they're gonna hire somebody in two months? They haven't hired anybody in ten months.
Well, well, like you said, it's the lawn, the lawn season, we usually hire part-time, the guy, I think he's coming back, we won't have any money for him.
Well, he said he does.
We do.
Director LaFevre says he does have for the part-time.
Right, well, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, we shouldn't, you know, stipulate in our contract with all of our vendors that guarantee no price increases through the ter, the, the term of the, our, our budget year. Cause that's, uh, I mean, that, that's, and I, I also wanna say, you know, we have our family fun night coming up at Annapolis High School Second Annual on, uh, on May tenth, uh, check it out on Facebook, you see, the, we're looking for sponsors, uh, donations of baked goods and raffle items and volunteers, thank you, thank you, Council.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Council, yep, is it, uh, more council members, Councilor Chair?
Yep.
Thank you, Councilor Chair, uh, my sincere condolences to all humanity for losing hope, Francis. May his legacy of compassion, humility, and advocacy for the poor and for peace inspire us all. His message of love and forgiveness will live on, may God bless him and grant him eternal peace. And I do wanna thank you, Councilor Chair, for mentioning the passing of my uncle.
You think Angel Venegas, she reminded me.
Uh, thank you, Angel. I, I was lucky enough to, that I had spent the last two days of his life next to his husband bedside. Uh, while he passed away Sunday morning, he was surrounded by his loving kids and grandkids. Uh, though, and the stukaton on, on his body and himself, uh, I know he's now in a better place. Uh, may he rest in peace and be united with his beloved wife and parents. Uh, may it cherish memories for him, of him, bring comfort and joy to our family, and I do thank you for your prayers, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Councilman, go on, anyone else?
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman.
Um, yeah, I just became aware of this today, and since we have both Director Dancy here and Director Bosniak here. Um, back parking lot, the lights are not working, who controls them? It's not only the parking lot, but over by the park, so I wasn't sure, it's, it's a little of both. Oh, you can.
I bet you Councilman Ahmad will get, Councilman Sod will get it done in a day. Alright.
Well, I can care for you tomorrow.
Second girlfriend works for DTE. Just kidding, his wife's gonna be in me. Just kidding, his wife's gonna be in need.
I also have a question for Roger. Roger, I'm looking at the agenda here, and there is a review summary of recording conversation between me and others. Who's providing you with these recordings?
Uh, I didn't put that in.
It's in the agenda, it's been finished five hundred twenty-five dollars for three hours worth of listening. And did I agree to be in recorded, did you know what?
You want me to answer it or you want to keep up?
I think there's a pending litigation here.
No, 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 I'm, I'm the other party and I already checked with an attorney, I can discuss it, I will.
I don't think this is the place to do it, you can.
Well, it's on the agenda, if it was on the agenda, well, you went past it quite quickly, but I guess it will come out in the end, we'll figure it out and I'll let everybody know what I find out.
I wasn't even here for agenda approval, I was outside, yeah, so I didn't go through it at all. Yeah, but I want you to, you know, you can.
No, no, no.
You can apologize for that.
I will apologize.
Yeah, I had nothing to do with.
Okay. He's an officer.
Yeah.
Well, no, I, I just figured since it was submitted and Roger Farina is on most of this billing, that he would be aware of what that was, because it had to have been provided through.
I'm gonna email. Yeah, why don't you send me the email, I can respond to your attorney, I can reiterate all the stuff you didn't follow when the contract.
Again, I don't want to go too much into this, Roger, come on, come on.
I'm just saying, I don't understand what you're talking about, but I sent it to us, we'll respond.
Come on, come on, Roger, point of order, let's go. This, this is important, it has to be brought up in Dearborn Heights, thank you very much, Councilman Sab.
A few things, uh, Director Dancy, I'll get those polls taken care of, I don't have a girlfriend at DTE, that's one of my best friends that works there and he's also the town manager. So just to put that on the record, um, especially for the wife, that's, well, my wife is an attorney, so.
Yeah, he's about to get sued. Better pray he's not a prenup.
Uh, secondly, just uh, you know, summer, spring is around the corner, speeders, you have kids at home, they have cars, please almost slow down. And our police department is gonna be rigorous out there this uh spring and summer ticketing people in impounding cars. Please, if you have a kid, child, teenager, driving a car, almost slow down in neighborhoods and on main roads. Accidents are piling up now, stop sign means, means stop. And secondly, cut your lawns, clean in front of your flower beds, pick up whatever's in the street, clean the basins in front of your house, just do some maintenance around the house, clean up the neighborhood. That's it for me.
Uh, quickly, yeah, go ahead.
One comment, uh, last Saturday, Mike Mackey put together a fantastic thing for the autistic children and adults. It was very well attended and he did it at his own expense.
Uh, quickly, I want to first, first and foremost say, I hope everybody had an amazing, happy Easter. Um, you know, it was a time, I hope that you guys were able to enjoy with your families, I know the importance of Easter and, and the religious beliefs and coming together. Uh, it reminds me a lot of Eid and really at the end of Ramadan, how me and my family come together and I know this happens within a lot of Christian homes and I, I, I love those moments. Uh, there's a lot of gratitude, there's a lot of uplifting, there's a lot of empowerment, and I hope you guys were all able to enjoy that at home, here in residence, to the council members. I also want to say that um this meeting went by extremely fast and seeing with the length of this meeting, having a presentation, it's eight fifteen and we're almost out of here. This is great, but I really want to thank those at home, I want to thank the residents, uh and a lot, you know, show up here every single meeting. You guys sit through four or five hour meetings and I want to thank you guys for that, someone that's watching, I was like, come on, Mo, hurry up, speed it up, or, I just wanted to thank you guys for that. I kind of echo Councilman Sab a little bit, weather's getting nice, seventy-four, eight, almost eighty degrees on, on Thursday. My kids are gonna be out playing on the sidewalk, be careful when you're driving, let's do a three-second stop. I asked it that police officers to patrol our neighborhoods, I know we have sergeants who are in here, just tend to work a lot of the night shift, but even at night.
It gets the job done.
Let's drive through it, speak with your colleagues, I hope the chiefs watching this at home, let's get back into our neighborhoods. Let's hold people accountable for the three-second rule, make sure that the reckless driving can stop, uh and to the Department of Public Works, Director Dancy. We, we have a lot of residents that are upset about these potholes, and I know this, you have limited resources and funds due to, you know, the cutting of overtime. And that's not your fault, because you weren't here when things were being taken advantage of with overtime, and now you're kind of at a standstill, but whatever you can do to help the residents with these potholes. It's very bad, I mean, I can tell you today, I had a resident call me and said that their association is gonna go buy their own full patch, they're gonna figure it out themselves, and I said, hold up. And I'm actually not even supposed to say this on the record, but true, I am anyways, probably gonna get in trouble. I'm actually gonna get in a lot of trouble for what I'm gonna announce, but I spoke to Wayne County. And they said they're gonna go down Ann Arbor Trail, and they're gonna go down Cherry Hill, and they're gonna fix every single pothole for us at no cost. Um, I asked, they go through our neighborhoods, and they said, can you imagine if somebody takes a picture of how it's gonna look to the media? Show some favoritism to Dearborn Heights, and I said, well, it's the least you can do, so I'm, I'm still negotiating that, but the good news is, all of Ann Arbor Trail, all of Cherry Hill is about to be re, re uh surfaced and patched up by Wayne County at no cost to us. Um, but, but that.
Not resurfaced.
Well, they're gonna get some spots resurfaced, they said, as well, you know, not, not the entire street, but they said that there are some areas, and you're gonna see them as early as tomorrow. Uh, so maybe this can take some leeway off of these big streets, we can enter into like uh some neighborhoods, and some neighborhoods, they need a complete repair. Hopefully, we can figure that out as. Your, Councilman.
Thank you, and I too want to wish, uh, I hope everyone had a happy and blessed Easter. Uh, I want us all to remember Pope Francis and his uh words of peace and unity. And protecting our children and our civilians uh in war. Uh, our condolences to Councilman Hassan Ahmad for the loss of his uncle, we'll pray for his soul. And please, everybody, let's remember to slow down as the weather's getting warm, uh the children dart out into the street and we, we don't want to lose any lives, please be careful, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move it up to an announcement.
Council Chair.
Yep.
Okay, the first announcement, the Ecorse Creek meeting is at six o'clock tomorrow night at the usual location at three 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 five South Beach Daily. But even more importantly, on Thursday, uh, let's see, what's the date on Thursday? Um, today's the twenty-seventh, the twenty-fourth, we will have our own director, Mr. Dancy, who will come and be our main speaker on the twenty-fourth of this month. Next month, we will have our state rep, Aaron Burns, as a speaker, and the following month, our assessor hopes to be a speaker at our meeting, so I just thought I'd put that out there for everybody. That's seven o'clock on the fourth Thursday of the month.
Thank you, Council Chair, I have an announcement from the assessor's office, uh the, the transfer affidavit that everybody has to file once they buy a property. Uh, the law has changed, uh for the, for the primary resident, nothing has changed, it's five dollars after the forty-five days at some late fee. If you don't file within forty-five days, every day is a five dollar fee, up to two hundred dollars. But the law has changed for commercial and non-primary residents, it's five dollars every day and it's jumped from one thousand to up to four thousand dollars. So if you skip it for a good year, you're gonna be paying about four thousand dollars in late fees, so make sure if you buy any properties, now it's statewide, it's not just the state of Dearborn Heights, the state has changed the law. So if you buy any properties, uh make sure you file the transfer affidavit. Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you, any other announcement? Hearing none, we'll go to public comment. Do you have an announcement?
No, it's a comment, but as a, as a tre, as a city treasurer, I live on Gully Road in Dearborn Heights. Um, first of all, I want to thank the city council for, you guys are up there, you're standing by what you should, the charter, and making hard decisions that need to be made. So I want to commend you all for doing that. I do want to encourage the administration to take a look for the funds for the fire department's budget amendments. But I also want to encourage them to make sure they talk to the department heads that those budget amendments would impact. Um, I will tell you that when I get checks to me, I review general ledgers before I ever sign a check to make sure it's not exhausted, because that's what the charter requires. But I will tell you, I see some general ledgers that are pretty healthy, okay? We are going in to the last two months of the fiscal year, I think, take a look and see what you can do with that. And see if it can help out our other departments that need it based on whatever reasons, I think that can be done, so I encourage the administration to do that. I do not recommend that the city council or any of us violate the fund balance policy, please, okay? That's submitted with the Michigan State Department Treasury, please do not do that. Um, the last thing I have real quick is I want to just clarify, I keep hearing the words missing funds, but I want to say it's not missing money, okay? We're talking about the budget and general ledgers, and what I think part of the problem is, it's been stated before, that in this budget, there's been an overstated revenue that has not necessarily been received. But it's being spent because it was budgeted like it is there. That is part of the problem, but let's be very careful, it's not money, missing money, missing funds, it's a problem within that budget itself. Um, but I do understand our new interim controller um has something, a plan that he's working through, and I hope that everybody continues to work together, thank you.
Madam President, before you leave, can you, I mentioned again, the state policy regarding the, the fund balance?
Well, you guys had stated it really well last time, so I should let you mention it.
No, no, go ahead.
So the city is required to have a fund balance policy that the council voted on and approved, that has been submitted with Michigan Department of Treasury. And I believe is it eight percent, I want to say?
Eight percent.
Eight percent, that's right, so that's eight percent of your fund balance, right? Needs to be remaining at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of this would be June thirtieth. At any time, you should always be maintaining that. Um, again, filed with Michigan Department of Treasury, but I am fearful, if we keep doing budget amendments and pulling from the fund balance, we're gonna be in a problem, right? We're gonna either vi, well, we will violate the fund balance policy, if not exhausted, because again, the problem is, have we received all of the revenue that was anticipated? Even from grants, grants aren't right away, some of those grants are reimbursement grants, you gotta pay upfront and then you get your money back. But by the way, when you submit the paperwork to get your money back, it could take up to a year before you get it, it may not even be this fiscal year, we've seen that happen. So I'd be very cautious of that, by the way, for council during this budget discussion, let's watch that and make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcement?
On public.
Any other public comment? Ready for this one, please state your name, city.
Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
We're gonna lay it out. Don't jinx us.
Quiet. I was gonna say, I'm a little bit mad as hell tonight about everything, our kids' safety, not just around Riverside School. But Margaret now has been over a year, almost two years now, money that's been promised to her to make the school zones safe. And nobody, not one of yous can, has an answer to what's happened to that money or what's gonna, what's going on.
They spent it on lunch.
Yeah, I, I, probably.
Honestly.
And I want to read what this man said about living here in Dearborn Heights. When I moved in here, it was twenty-five years ago, I was proud to say I lived here, not so much anymore. Walking in, just walking in to our city hall, it's disgusting. The grass isn't cut right, not edged, there's leaves laying all over my front door, the front mat still looks like the rats have, you know, we can't, can we not even afford a new mat for our door as you enter this building? It's disgusting. I came here to a council meeting eight years ago, Denise was our city council, about a sidewalk on Warren Avenue? That I helped a lady in a, in a wheelchair pick her up, me and my husband, while we were riding our bikes, guess what, Mo, that sidewalk still hasn't been fixed. I have no faith in this city at all anymore. It's, it's bad, and now we have a police department, the, the kids are speeding like crazy, and I'm not saying our, our police officers are great. But you guys gotta do something, we have to get grants, we have to do something. We as citizens aren't protected anymore, the streets aren't safe, the speeding, the kids, everything, the garbage, everything. I'm tired of picking up garbage, I'm tired of finding a gun on Warren Avenue. We just had that Airbnb sitting on Plainfield, supposedly there was a gun that nobody could find, how, how do we know it's not sitting on Warren Avenue? I guess we won't know until I go clean it again. This is disgusting, things need to get better, and I hope our mayor, where the hell is he at? Six months he hasn't shown up at a meeting. It's disgusting, and it's time maybe to get the media involved or something, to get something done around here.
Too many.
No yelling, I just got yelled at, please don't be yelling.
Rose Tuppee, Two Lane Street, Dearborn Heights. At one point, I don't know how many months ago, they had said there was a budget to repave from Telegraph to Grimley Park on Annapolis.
Correct.
Does anybody still know anything about that, is it gonna happen?
This is, this uh, supposed to be this spring, summer.
Yes, okay, because here we are, we beat up, and you know, there's three things I want in this department, in this city, I don't care about anything else but these three things, police, fire, and DPW. We're beating them up, we beat the shit out of them, and nothing gets done, it's not fair for them.
Never happened before, by the way.
No. Last years, last couple of years.
Point of order, please, during comp.
Who's that point of order to me?
Not, not to you.
It's in front over there. Because I've been here through nine mayors, I'm looking for number ten, I was personally friends with six of them. They would come to my house and I'd go to their house, in fact, one of them, I still meet up with his son, I've never seen anything like this in any place. And like Bob Constance knows, I have a cousin that was mayor in California, he turned that city around so fast and it's still going good, but he died. I would like to bring him here to show somebody, anyway, that's all I'd like to know, is my, is our street still gonna be paved?
Yes, Council Chair, just to upcode of that, I remember putting in a weekly five thousand dollars, I believe it was. A week after they paved at the curbs, and dirt would have to be filled up right away, not wait a month, and they agreed to that contract, so we may not be on it too, once they start it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
That beat up my boys.
Thank you, Rose.
I'm just making sure nobody was interrupting you, that's all. Just to be clear.
I, I kind of missed my spot, so I'm gonna, during public comments, because I was looking for the exact wording. Now that we have candidates not always confirmed yet, this is just a friendly reminder that council has a policy. That electioneering by candidates for office is prohibited at council meetings, just a friendly reminder for those that know, it's just to reiterate, and for those that don't know, now you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not gonna be long, because Mo stared at me the entire time last time, so. So, no, no, I just want to say.
Your name, please.
Nizhatenun, Whitefield Street, Dearborn Heights, um, I, I have felt the same frustrations as some other residents, but I'm hopeful, so I'm hopeful. I see, I see a light at the end of the.
We are too.
So.
Thank you, Trustee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that was, that was totally, it was a little veto.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights, um, I don't know if any of you guys saw in Dearborn what the mayor, Abdullah, has done with the safety. I'll echo that, but the speed bumps, the stop signs, the crosswalks around the school zones, that's what I want, and that's what my city deserves, and that's what Joey deserves.
You too. Can you see it up here, please? No, you don't even have it up here. All right, anyone else? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none?
Motioner, Jersey.
Second. What's your name, my Councilman, uh?
Sab.
Dobbs, my Councilman, Ahmad, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
A twenty-nine.